I now call the Wednesday, July tenth, meeting of the Kansas State Board of Education to order. We have nine members at the table. Dennis is still out. And I will kick off today with item number one, discussion and possible action on proposed amendment to accreditation regulation ninety-one dash thirty-one dash thirty-five. This is part of high school graduation requirements regarding the FAFSA requirement. Commissioner?
So as you think Scott and Ben are going to go over the proposal, so you have approved the regulation that has in it currently that every student will be afforded the opportunity to do the FAFSA unless the student opts out, he or she can opt out, the parent opts the student out, or the school opts that student out. That's currently in the regulation passed. The discussion is whether to keep it, remove it, or remove it with something else around accreditation and doing it in a different way. So I just wanted you to know, I mean, you would have to, Scott will probably go through this, you'd have to remove it, and then you could just leave it removed, or you could replace it with something, I think Ben will talk about that through accreditation, so, so everyone understand? Okay, okay. And so Scott, I think you're going to start.
Thank you, Commissioner and Madam Chair. I did throw up there while Commissioner Watson was talking, this is the actual language that is, was approved by the state board. One of the solutions that I offered last month was to get rid of, just eliminate that language. I had shared with you last month, and I just want to make sure I clarify something. Generally, whenever I bring to you language, to, you know, proposed language, that's the language that we expect to be back before you within a year or less. And if there's a substantial change to that language, I would bring that back to you before we move forward. In this case, I'm just kind of giving the board a heads up, and I'm making these comments so that a year from now when I have to bring them back, I'm reminding myself what authority you told me to do. My understanding will be that if the board takes the action to remove this as a graduation requirement, your intent will be that it is effective immediately or as soon as possible, so that really there's no one that ever has to worry about this as a graduation requirement. How we get there in regulation might change between now and the time I bring it back to you. Because you're dealing with a regulation that, as written, deals with part of the high school population, and, but not all of the students, and we're trying to make that consistent, I know I'm talking in circles and probably not making a lot of sense. I'm just telling you that when this comes back a year from now, and you're watching this video to see what the board voted on, it might not be as simple as simply striking this language. We may have to add this as a sunset provision for this particular part. I have not figured out exactly how we're going to make it happen. In an ideal world, it would be as easy as just striking that language. And then on the effective date, we would strike that language as well. I don't know if that's really going to work at the end of the day. But if you vote yes on this, this is kind of a heads up, my plan will be to figure out a way to make it effective immediately, striking that requirement across the board. With that, Madam Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions. I can talk about how to add FAFSA discussion in, but I'll wait till Dr. Proctor talks about adding it as a, as an accreditation requirement, how we would actually do that. But as far as this option, I'm happy to answer any questions if the board has any.
Okay. Board members, you should be well familiar with this one, we've talked about it several times, so this is an opportunity for discussion. And as you'll note on the agenda, it does say possible action, and so someone would need to bring a motion if we want to take action. Check the hand raising app, otherwise feel free to raise your hand.
Well, and then Madam Chair, I was going to ask Dr. Proctor if he wanted to come up and talk more about the
That would be great.
Other part of it.
Welcome, Dr. Proctor.
So, we went over this last month too, but as Dr. Watson mentioned, a, an option for the board to consider would be adding this as a requirement or an assurance within the compliance component of KISA. And just some of those details here, essentially, a chief administrative officer, most likely superintendent or a designee would sign off on the communication that would have occurred with families and students. And that third bullet, we would provide specific information, guidance, walkthrough with school systems, how they would assure that parents are provided that information through information nights, which is a common occurrence in school districts, but feeling like the most important component is that that communication is there, that parents, that students, anybody that would, that would be of interest to that student's future would know the potential benefits of that application and understand the process that they would go through for that. So this could be a compliance area where that sign off could occur within the KISA accreditation process.
And then Kathy, sorry. Okay, we'll start with Kathy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted, I guess, put on the record where I'm standing, as I think you probably all know, but leaning into what Board Member McNeese, who chaired that task force, said last meeting several times, in that the, the idea of the task force was to place a burden, not on the parent or the student, but on the school and on the district to do more in getting this presented before the students. I believe doing it through compliance does that, not through actual graduation requirements, which does put the burden on the parent or the student to have to opt out and deal with the whole situation. Doctor, yeah, Dr. Watson said last meeting also that, because we know that several districts have opted out as a district in their own policies, and his comment was that that's really not possible because that's not how it's written in regulation, that's not the requirement. The requirement is that the parent or the student has to opt out. So that is placing the burden on students and parents, and from what we have heard, that wasn't in the mind of the task force to do, it was in the mind of the task force to put this on the, the school, the district itself. And because KISA has now come up with all of this changes that we're talking about, to me it's even more possible to do, to do exactly that. So that's why I stand so, you know, strongly partially on that, but also on moving it to KISA so that we are putting that burden where I understand it to have been wanted to be in the first place. Thank you.
Betty.
Thank you. Actually, Kathy said a lot of the things that, that I was thinking, but let me share a concern because the word burden is used. And I know for a lot of students and families that are not aware of, of the benefits, that they can go on and advance their education and have the financial means to do so as a result of this particular thing. So I'm just pointing out, I like putting it under KISA as a FAFSA in that form, simply because it does place still some responsibility on the institution to make sure all students are where you'd be amazed how, yeah, there's a significant number that know the process, that understand what they can do, but there are so many families still that are not aware of how would I go about doing this. This way, it addresses both. For those that feel like it's a burden that's taken away for those that are not informed or aware, it keeps it on the table for those students. I am concerned when we start looking at things that we're not looking at all of our students and all of their needs. And I want to be sure those students that are in less fortunate circumstances know that there is a way financially available for them to avail to higher education. So as long as we can keep that in the system some kind of way, then I would be very pleased with that. Thank you.
Jim Porter.
I've struggled with this even when we had the original, pardon me, original discussion. Even when we voted originally, you know, this is something that was a concern to me. But I'm concerned that we have students who are capable that are not getting the information they need to do what's best for them. And if, if compliance is a FAFSA night and sending messages, it's going to get to the same people that get to them now, in my view. And I would like to know how we're going to assure that those non, those students, first generation students that have not, that don't have the family tradition of higher education, and that are capable of doing, of moving in that direction, how in the world are we going to assure that they have all the information they need to be successful? I say I've struggled with this from the beginning, and quite frankly, I'm struggling with it today.
Do you want to respond? Can we move on?
You know, it's, I'll, I'll give my best response. To assure anything can be a challenge. I, I think it's the priority that we can give, because it, it is a, and having walked through this process myself with a, with my own child recently and being familiar in that sense, it's, it's a challenging process. But I, I think it's the priority that we give it, the, the type of channels that we utilize to communicate, the, the types of things that school systems that have embraced this are doing and doing well. So I, I do think, you know, through this process, I, I don't know that we can do anything with a hundred percent assurance, but I think we can give it priority, because it is very beneficial to, to students, to families, and I, I think we can have good success with that.
Jim McNeese.
I'm trying to think if I can say something different. The we didn't, I don't recall, and there may be some people who are here or on the graduation task force, this being a topic that was under so much scrutiny, it just made sense. And you were dealing with people who were, who worked with graduates, pretty much, and parents. You know, and I have to be honest with you, quite frankly, I don't know what the fuss is about. I mean, we do things and make kids sign and parents sign stuff all the time, and, and it really, as I've said so many times, was more of a directive to schools to take a more aggressive approach to make sure that kids, especially low income kids, were getting the opportunity and supports that are needed to complete these, these forms. I've had parents that were quote, "high income" or, and they still had problems with it, you know, why do I have to do that? And then they come back and whine at me the next year, "Come here and make me do this, you should have taken it more seriously." You know, because my kid then couldn't get a scholarship, couldn't get, you know, the financial aid we needed, you know. Yeah, it's no sweat off your backs that, you know, somebody's not going to have, that's going to come up in August and as they're trying to get into their freshman year and the whole four years, they told us they weren't going to go to school, tech school or any school, and all of a sudden they wake up in August first and say, "Well, I want to do this, too late." No money. You know, effort, energy, but they just don't have the funds. So, you know, as I have often said and will continue to say, this was not so much a, a burden upon the students and the parents, but really upon the school to make sure that they're reaching out to students at all levels in an aggressive manner, because just like whether you're going to pass US history, you know, or English, we make sure they do it, we do lots of extra things to contact, communicate, and ensure that these kids have every opportunity to do it. And a parent doesn't want to do it, just say, "I don't want to do it." Okay? That's all we need is that I don't want to do it, you're done. You know. And I guess maybe trying to save a couple of people at the end of their high school experience, the agony of not realizing their choices that they made in February, March, and April, fill it out, you know, and find out August that they can't go to school because they, "Oh darn, I didn't fill that out." So, you know, it's no skin off my back, my kids are gone, I'm gone, I'm not going to do this. But it is, I think, we could help one kid or five hundred kids if we left this in. You know. It's really not a big deal for the kids, it's not like they got to pass English four. Should be worrying about that. You know. So, hey, I think the graduation committee would be disappointed. We didn't have near as much discussion as you're having right now, or we have had over this. And quite, that, I've had talked to several people, and they're kind of surprised, that's what they picked on? That was the item that got the most attention? You know. So, hey. On behalf of the graduation committee, they were well aware that things could come to the board and they could change. And that's our prerogative, and that's our responsibility. So going back to the status quo is not going to throw a wrench into anything, but you're going to have some kids that are probably not going to be able to go to college because, you know, they didn't have the money and they quite frankly, probably I'm trying to say this nicely, didn't follow up and fill the forms out. So I think, I don't want to say we're ready to vote, but if we're ready to vote, let's do it and get it over with and move on. This is not Mount Everest.
We've got a few more hands up. Danny?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, but to make it a requirement to graduate, I, I struggle with doing that. It seems like we want to do everything for kids and parents instead. You know, I think they're supposed to try to figure things out themselves and ask questions. If you want to go to, if you want to go to college and you have a desire to go to college, I believe you need to figure it out. If your parents want to help you go to college, great. If they don't, then you need to figure it out. We're, we're, it seems like we want to do everything for everybody. I'm, I'm sorry, I, I come from, I guess, a different era, I'm old school and you, you're supposed to, if you want to be successful, then you get out there and be successful, and you do whatever it takes to be successful. I'm sorry. Now, should the, maybe the, the counselors at school give you all the different things that you can look into if you want to get a better career, if you want to go to college or whatever? But make it a requirement, I, I really, really struggle with that.
Anne. Thank you, Madam Chair, good discussion. I don't have a problem removing it from graduation requirements, I've heard enough from parents and superintendents that, that I'm okay with that. But, because it's more than just filling out a form, this is a lot of work. And it has, I, I think it has great value, and I don't think it really has much to do with, you know, taking responsibility for yourself. There are a lot of kids out there who have no idea this is even a possibility until it's presented to them, their parents never went to college, nobody has ever gone to college or any kind of school. They don't even know it's a possibility. But I think to, they, what do they say, "To a hammer, everything looks like a nail." And that's kind of us, like every time we want to do something, we want to hammer people, and I think there is the whole carrot and stick thing, and I don't think it really belongs in KISA either. We've got another partner in this, and that's Kbor. They already have an incentive program, a reward program for schools that do a good job of getting kids to fill out the FAFSA. I think we ought to take it out of the graduation requirements, but before we do anything else with it, explore with our Kbor partner what would be the best way to use the carrot instead of the stick on this issue.
Betty, I'm going to jump in ahead of you since this is round two for you, I don't want to have the last word. I did serve on the graduation requirements task force. I think it's important that parents understand, that everyone understands the why. Why would we do this? A FAFSA night's not enough. It's, it's one night, and a lot of families are working, they're busy, they can't make it, they've got other kids. And so if you miss a FAFSA night, well, you're, you're out of luck. I think that fidelity of how this is implemented is key. And so to Anne's point, there's a lot more that goes into it. When I think about what it looks like for a student who's going to potentially be the first in their family to go to college, do they know about the Kansas Promise Scholarship? Do, have they taken advantage of dual and concurrent enrollment opportunities at their high school? This is something that potentially benefits those at-risk kids the most. I'm not sure that making it a requirement to graduate is the way to get there. What I really want to see is districts stepping up and making a much stronger effort to provide all of the information to students and their families. I want to say real quick, in the conversations that I've gotten to hear among superintendents, they tend to run, the smaller districts have an Excel spreadsheet, and they're checking the box for every kid, and they make sure that the box is checked. I have heard of no one that has not been able to graduate because they didn't fill out the FAFSA, just for the record. I just think we can do better. I want to know how we can do better and how we can get this information in front of students and families, and it's not just about the FAFSA. It's, it goes back to IPS, it goes back to post-secondary success. Filling out the FAFSA does not necessarily equate to, two years from now, that student is still enrolled in college. That's what I want to solve for. If they're going to go to college, it would be great to see them finish college. Otherwise, they filled out the FAFSA, they've racked up some debt, now they've got debt and they don't have a diploma from college. Betty.
Thank you. And again, I'm just kind of following up on, on a thought that, first of all, we talk about all students. So when we hear from parents, that does not represent one hundred percent of the parents of all kids that are in school. And when we talk about the responsibility, we talk that, we want all kids to be successful. You may have had some advantages. Your children may have had some advantages because of your status. But I have to remind you, there still are students, even in the foster care system, that don't have parents that can step up on their behalf. There are students that when you talk to them, they are not aware of scholarships, they are not aware of, of any kind of financial aid in order to go to school. And if we dismiss this, then we're not talking about all students, we're turning our back on, right now roughly about forty percent of our students. When you add in those that are economically disadvantaged, those that are in the foster care system, we have a responsibility to advocate for all. And if we're not going to advocate for all, let's get rid of that word in our mission statement. Let's just say, those that can come and express their concerns, that's who we're going to represent. But what about those that don't have anyone to come and, and advocate on their behalf? And I am saying to dismiss this or to look at it as a burden for some, it's an advantage for others. And we have a responsibility, whether you like it or not. Whether you want to accept the fact that there are kids that are not as fortunate, that still live in Kansas, if you want to look at them as they don't exist, that's, that's up to you. But that is not why I am sitting here. I believe that when we say all, whether you want to turn your nose up or not, we still have a responsibility to all. And I like the idea of, we need to look at a way of enforcing this. That was a way that doesn't appeal to some, maybe it could have been tweaked, I don't know. But I don't want to turn our backs and say, "Well, we'll leave it up to schools," because we left it up to schools before. And again, there are so many students that weren't aware of that as an option. So please don't forget that, that's, I beg of you, please don't forget that.
Don't see any more hands up. I do just want to highlight something that Betty said, though, I'm, I'll tie it back to, I think there's opportunity here with IPS. I kind of wonder what it was like to be part of that group that designed IPS and, and passed that in the first place, because it seems to fit right in. So whether it's IPS, whether it's KISA, I'd be curious to get your take on how we do a better job. I think we all want the same thing, we want to see these kids succeed, it's just how are we going to get there?
I, I think sometimes it starts with these kinds of conversations. You know, it's a, it's a known element, but it's probably not been a prioritized element. And I think just hearing the passion from the board and understanding we do have mechanisms, I think, you know, whether it's graduation requirements, whether it's, whether it's KISA, whether it's looking at a structure like IPS, it kind of goes back to how, how we create the, kind of the mechanization or the, the conduit to elevate something as a priority. I think you have to solidify I think you have to solidify, so it's finding what that right mechanism is. I know that's the challenge here. But once we're able to do that, then it becomes that priority and we can continuously communicate that. I know Natalie's team is coming up next and maybe she can even speak a little bit to, to the connection with IPS. I do think, back to Mrs. Mah's point, there is a Kboard component as well. There are things that are happening. And so just understanding what is happening from that end and how we can be maybe a stronger partner in that. So I think there's a lot of different possibilities on how we can strengthen it. I think it's just deciding, how are we going to solidify it? Whether it's through graduation requirements, through KISA, or a structure like IPS. That's probably the decision we need to make in the near term at least.
Kathy?
I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I moved that the Kansas State Board of Education approved the submission of an amendment to KAR 913135 through the formal regulatory adoption process.
If I can ask a clarifying question real quick, is that, Mark, is that good enough verbiage?
Striking the FAFSA requirement from the regulation as Attorney Gordon has presented.
That works. Is there a second? Michelle? Further discussion? Commissioner?
I did receive a text this morning from Dennis, who's not here, that he would be in favor of that motion. I reached out to him to say, I'd be happy to call him. He hasn't responded. I don't know if he's in a meeting, but I did want you to know his wishes. But I don't think unless he texts me to call soon, that he'll be able to vote. So just wanted you to be aware of that.
Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor of Kathy's motion to remove, as presented on the screen? Raise your hand. So I've got seven. Opposed? Three. Wait, six, six, three. Yep. Sorry, Dennis. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. I do want this to be a future agenda item. Return to that conversation. Item number two, receive CTE 202324 Career Cluster Reviews. Welcome, Natalie Clark.
Thank you. Chair Haas, members of the State Board of Education, Commissioner Watson, thank you for your interest and allowing us to present to you this morning the Cluster Pathway Review Recommendations that were done by our Advisory Committee during the 2324 school year. I want to kick off by saying, Career and Technical Education Vision in Kansas. All Kansas students are engaged in quality career pathways to prepare them for a lifetime of opportunities as productive and responsible citizens. So as we talked about a little bit last month, these are organized educational activities. Offer a sequence of courses that prepare individuals with rigorous academic content, relevant technical knowledge, and skills to prepare them for further education, careers, and emerging professions, which may include high-skill, high-wage, or end-demand industries. So we just passed out a new design. So this new design does not represent a change in the clusters' pathways, but rather a new design to communicate clusters and pathways for the 2425 school year. This is an infinity sunflower, so we would like to point out that it's connected and that applying those English language arts, math, and science skills in the areas students are most interested in, transfer between different clusters and interests, and the middle is representative employability skills. So we've given you a set. The first poster has industries highlighted. So that would be the elementary awareness. So being aware of the different industries. The second poster has clusters highlighted. And the clusters, it should be the second one in your stack, has 16 career clusters. So making the students more aware of the clusters in Kansas. And the final poster has pathways highlighted. And we have 36 pathways and they have a bullet indicative of the different pathways in Kansas. We review clusters every five years. And this will be a way for us to update them. And we're going to talk a little bit more about the national model. But this will be for the 2425 school year. In review, the 2324 school year, there were 3,577 applications for career pathways. That's 96.5% of school districts have at least one pathway approved. So there are 36 to choose from. They may choose one or more, but 96.5% of our schools do have a career pathway. And I am fortunate to have with us the Chair of our Kansas Advisory Committee for Career and Technical Education. We have Shannon Bohm. She's the President at Schaefer Architecture. She has served two terms on our Advisory Committee, six years. So she is the current Chair. And she's going to tell you a little bit about our committee and how it works. And then our consultants in the different content areas have facilitated these cluster reviews and they're also going to share some information with you. So Shannon, thank you and welcome.
Hey, thank you very much. Good morning. It's an honor to be here. I do need to give a shout out to Jim McNeese as he mentioned to me some years ago about, I'm serving on this committee. So I appreciated you making me aware. So anyway, thank you. But our committee consists of 31 members. We have 16 voting members and six advisory members. And then we have nine with KSTE involved with our committee. I do want to redo the purpose of our committee. This is how we start out every meeting, but just a little refresher for you. But the purpose of the Kansas Advisory Committee for Career and Tech Education is to provide business and industry a unified voice to advocate and provide recommendations for continuous improvement for career and technical education. So I think it's a good reminder of, of why we meet, and we meet quarterly. We do have 16 members. And a list of the committee members is included in the binder that you received. It's behind tab one, page one, so you can review that at your leisure. But these logos are representative of the companies or firms that are represented on our committee. The 16 voting members represent one of the 16 career clusters that are identified by the state of Kansas. And I, just kind of a personal note, but when we talk to different individuals who are interested in joining the committee, I think they always say that they want to have an opportunity to impact students and education. And they also want to support their profession. As you know, we're all needing good, talented workers in Kansas. And I think it shows by the quality and the activity and the involvement of our committee. You know, when, I think we talk about sometimes that we realize the students have reading and ELA and math and science. But to see them have the opportunity for career and tech ed classes and to show their passion and also have the time to develop real world skills, it's, it's important to our committee and we believe it's important to Kansas as well. The goals, you can see relevant and rigorous and reflective. And as far as our committee, how we strive to meet these goals in our capacity is that we do have quarterly reports from members of our committees that, in their report, they talk a little bit about what they do. We've had Deputy Chief Brad Crisp from Sedgwick County Fire talk about firefighting, law enforcement. We've had a presentation on architecture. Garmin, we have a mechanical engineer, how Garmin uses or utilizes engineering and then manufacturing. But that keeps us updated. Then we also have a time that we share what's going on in the state or their school district they're involved with as far as career and tech. So again, the awareness is important to our group. Then I think one of our main important parts of our committee is that we actually, each one of us chair the cluster reviews that we're going to be reviewing with you today. And we also are responsible for getting additional business and industry and educators to join our committee. And we want those to be very active and participate with our committee because, again, we think this is important. When we are doing these reviews, we're, we're looking at the course competencies. And we're going to review more of that as we move through this presentation.
Thank you to our Chair. We talked a little bit about the sequence of courses at the introductory level and the technical and application level. We review each course within the clusters we review as well as each competency. And there is a link and it can be found on kste.org to all the individual competencies. And we're going to talk, if there are recommended changes as part of this review, they're also posted under the public review session. So this year, we reviewed the following clusters. Agriculture, Food, Natural Resources, Architecture and Construction, Arts AV, Technology Communications, Education and Training, Engineering, Finance, and Health and Biosciences. So this was seven of the 16 clusters. Our Advisory Committee has reviewed those, but these changes that are coming before you will go into effect in the 2526 school year. So schools will start to apply for those November 15th. And they'll have from November 15th through March 1st to submit applications. We did give you a notebook as we're talking because there's a lot of information. The small notebook under the first tab that Chair Bohm referred to are the committee members. So she went over our Kansas Advisory Committee for Career and Technical Education. However, the following pages are the members who volunteered their time. We call them our Cluster Review Committee Members. So in totality, there were 207 members. There were 64 members of Business and Industry, 48 members of post-secondary institutions, including two-year and four-year, and there were 90 secondary educators. So those are teachers who have, have been teaching the courses that they're reviewing, all different sizes of schools, all different geographic locations in Kansas. And then we also, when possible, had the Career and Technical Organization State Advisor. So we wanted you to see all the different representatives and who served on these committees. They began their work in September of 2023 and they concluded their work in June. I also want to point out that State Board of Education member Anne Mah is a voting member and also serves on our committee. This was the timeline. So the committees began with face-to-face meetings. They continued with face-to-face or Zoom meetings as needed. Our goal was to have all of the review wrapped up prior to March 1 because we post for 30 days public comment and we receive that comment and take it back to the committee. If you're interested in seeing what we posted for public comment, the link is included below that March 1 line item. April 17th, we brought all of the information to a face-to-face meeting with our quarterly advisory committee as a receive item. And June 18th, they had a vote, an action item, to approve the recommendations. So now we are bringing this information to you. When we're done, we have larger binders that has the information. We invite in the Department of Labor to present the labor market information in Kansas on each of these different clusters. We invite in the Board of Regents to make sure we're aligning with their post-secondary programs and others, which we'll get to in here in just a moment. So here we are today. Thank you. Receive item, an action item, August 13th or 14th. So if you have any questions, we'll have time at the end. But we do have a binder for your reference and you can reach out to us also. Every committee reviewed the following information or had guest speakers in. It included labor market information. Emily Dirksen and Angela White prepared information of which we'll give you and that was sent out. We had business and industry feedback regarding trends and skills because we talked last time how quickly skills can change. We had Alan Cobb, the President of Kansas Chamber, present in a face-to-face meeting his, the competitive analysis of Kansas Chamber. And we had the Department of Commerce come and present those industries most likely to experience economic growth in Kansas. We compared, we had a comparison report across states. We invited the Board of Regents to come in and have program alignment conversations or present. We do have the Board of Regents serve as an advisory member as well as labor and commerce. We look at the national model. The National Career Cluster Framework has been in place for about two decades. We shared last time, I'll share a little bit more. It's undergoing modernization. So I always look at that to make sure that as much as possible, based upon the Kansas labor market, that we're able to align with that. Again, we look at every course and every competency in the pathways that we're reviewing. We look at industry credentials certifications. And we are mindful to include that application of skill and work-based learning. Every committee, all of these different reports. If you'd like more information on this, we'd be happy to share. Some of the key points, I have, this is on the Kansas Commerce webpage. They came and presented in person to us, Zoom, several of them, that these are the key industries that they expect will experience economic growth in Kansas. So we're also mindful of those. And again, mindful of the 2024 Kansas Target Sector Development that has been published by the Department of Commerce Office of Innovation. This is just a snippet. We have all of our courses posted on our website, all of the competencies. So this is an example of accounting. It's a one-credit or one-year course. And we have benchmarks and competencies that educators will teach in their courses if they have approved pathway. So this is a sample of what the committee goes through, just a very small part. So that, I'm going to refer you, we looked at the first tab, Committee Members. The second tab, because some of what we're going to be showing you, design sheets are rather small. It is under the Pathway Design Sheet tab. And we're, we're going to talk about pre-review. So what does the cluster look like prior to? What are those courses? And then we're going to talk about post-review. So these are the recommendations our Advisory Committee took action on. We're asking you to review and take action on as well. So if you have any questions, then the third tab is a summary of those pathway changes. So our districts like to have a summary, but of course, they can go into every course and look at those individual competencies as well. So this is a very summarized account and will give you a resource to take with you if you have more information. So I get the opportunity to present agriculture and recommendations that the Agriculture Cluster Committee reviewed. Their recommendations include discontinuing agribusiness and discontinuing biotechnology in the agriculture pathway. The reason cited, limited participation. Only two pathways had specific courses and many competencies are reflected in courses and other pathways. The Animal Science Pathway, this is what is in effect. And up at the top, and you have a copy of this under the second tab, is the 2425 Pathway Design Sheet. The courses, and you saw a sample, each course has individual competencies. This is what it looked like pre-review. And this is, I'm going to summarize some of the recommendation. If you want more details, it is posted on the public comment page or we can certainly provide that. So recommendation of a name change to animal cell, health, science, health, and industry. You may have heard that Kansas is part of the animal corridor. So we felt, they felt that this reflected the diversity of animal science occupations in Kansas. 10 courses had updated competencies and five new courses were recommended. The next pathway, the pre-review Comprehensive Agriculture Science Pathway. So this is what will be in place for the 2425 school year. Recommendations for the 2526 school year include a name change to diversify the agriculture science to reflect the diversity of agriculture in Kansas. This also includes 12 courses with updated competencies, seven existing courses in other areas that were recommended to be pulled in, and four new courses. Food, Products, and Processing. And this is what is in place for 2425 or prior to the review and what is recommended for the 2526 school year. And what is recommended for the 2526 school year, the same name, but adding some introductory courses and Agribusiness Management has a name change. The next pathway, Natural Resources and Environmental Systems Management. This is what's in place for 2425. For 2526, it's recommended that the name change is put in place to reflect the growing demand for occupations associated with natural resources and sustainability of resources in Kansas. It includes eight courses with updated competencies and benchmarks. Three new courses recommended include Agriculture Explorations 2, Sustainable Alternative Agriculture, and Wildlife and Recreation Management. Plant Systems. This is what's in place for 2425. Post-review, recommendation of a name change, Plant Science and Industry Operations to reflect the growing demand for occupations associated with plant science and horticulture. Nine courses have updated competencies. And there's two courses that are recommended to be added. That's Plant and Animal Science and Advanced Plant and Animal Science. Power Structure and Technical Systems Pathway. For 2526, recommendations are made to change the pathway name to reflect the need for agriculture, technology, and mechanics in Kansas. There were many courses reviewed with competency changes and two new courses developed and recommended to be added that include the one that we just mentioned, Agriculture Explorations 2 and Agriculture Engineering and Technology. So that was, we went through them rather quickly. Like we said, we have lots of information that they reviewed and we'll give you more information as we finish. And now the consultants are going to introduce themselves. And they did facilitate these pathway reviews, so they will also help you see what has been recommended for those particular clusters.
Good morning. My name is Kevin Bronson. I'm the Education Program Consultant for the areas of Architecture and Construction, Manufacturing, Engineering, Transportation, and our Law and Public Safety Programs. In the Design, Production, Repair field, we had two clusters reviewed this year. And the first one was the Architecture and Construction Cluster. I do want to say thank you to all the committee members who worked diligently on this throughout the year, especially to Shannon from Schaefer Architecture, who was our advisory board member, but also chaired this review committee and was a great asset to the team. And in addition to that, PJ Riley, a former school administrator from Wichita, also helped provide his leadership and guidance throughout this process as I was coming onboard of the state. In addition to them, we had eight other business-industry partners across the state, including partners of Hutton Construction, McCown Gordon, and our P1 Services to include a few of those. And also our nine post-secondary instructors and nine high school educators who really worked hard on this, who were cross-representatives of the state. In your packet, you'll see the pre and post-reviews on page, starting on page 13. Looking at the pre-review, the committee reviewed this course content. All the courses in our, in this pathway were organized to help provide a better scope and sequence to instructors and administrators as they develop their course content. The course titles were reviewed to see if they were relevant with the industry language and for student understanding when they go to do their pre-enrollment throughout the course of the year. And the content, we also want to make sure the content was aligned with today's relevant industry and with our Kansas Board of Regent programs, because we do align this with our Kansas Board of Regent programs. Looking at the post-review on page 14, you can see in contrast the updated course titles, the changes that were made. You'll see that the courses that are being removed, the courses that are being removed are the Pipe Fitting Technology and also the Furniture and Cabinet Making Fabrication Course, which actually was reworked and merged in with the Advanced Materials Technology Course. So it really wasn't really taken away. It was just merged in with there to create a new title called Advanced Materials and Fabrication. In addition to that, we had two new courses that were worked and developed, and that's the Architecture Design 1 and the Architecture Design 2, because they are more relevant in the designing aspect. And the other ones were more in the CAD or the designing aspect. So there's a little bit difference when you're talking about design versus the actual CAD operations. Okay?
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Erin Canet, the Education Consultant with Arts AV and Communication and Health and Biosciences. We begin our review, looking at what is currently in place. So for Arts AV and Technology Communications, we looked at the Digital Media Pathway. This is starting on page 15. Graphic Design, Web and Digital Communications under the Information and Technology Cluster and Networking Systems. These are the pre-review design sheets, what is currently in place for the 2425 school year for graphic design, digital media, and web and digital communications. As Natalie stated, there were many other data and resources available, but the one that stood out the most for us was the labor market information from the Kansas Department of Labor. It identified two, high-skill, high-wage, and independent jobs in Kansas. That would be the graphic designer and web and digital interface designer. We also heard loud and clear from our industry partners that they wanted a one-stop shop. They wanted someone that could create video, edit graphics, and produce web content. So it made sense to merge the three pathways into a single pathway called Media Design and Communications. This is the post-review design sheet. The committee recommended courses to be updated and aligned to also post-secondary offerings and the essential skills indicated on the ONET and Lightcast data. A few of those skills would be authoring tools, editing user interface, special effects, interactive media projects. Within this new title, 22 courses were updated. One new course was added at the introductory level, Introduction to Web and Digital Media. And eight courses were removed. However, those courses remained available in other pathways like marketing and telecommunications. Under the national model of ACT framework, telecommunication falls under Arts AV and Communication, which led us to looking at the Network Systems Pathway. The Kansas Office of Broadband and Development has identified a 12% cross-industry deficit in the area of telecommunications. Originally, telecommunications was part of this pathway, but it fell off the high-demand list. Well, it is now back due to BEAD, Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Program, which is a $65 billion grant program funded by the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. The goal is to provide infrastructure and the adoption of increased access of high-speed internet, essentially bringing that high-speed internet to underserved locations in Kansas. Knowing this, we needed to bring telecommunications back to the networking pathway. With that, four new courses were added. Internet of Things at the introductory level, telecommunications at the technical level, and two applied courses, telecommunications and telecom workplace experience for those work-based learning experiences for students. A few more courses were added from other pathways like engineering and the GIS facial applications.
Good morning. We're going to switch gears and talk about education and training. My name is Taylor Spengler. I am the Family Consumer Sciences Education Program Consultant with our CTE team. Our review for education and training benefited greatly from our industry partners here at KSCET, Sure Licenseure, Early Childhood, as well as our Special Education and Title Services team. We also partnered with Child Care Aware of Kansas and the Kansas Board of Regents, additionally with post-secondary partners from the Kansas State University, Mid-America Nazarene University, and Emporia State University. Our review was a little unique in that we both looked at the education and training cluster as well as the Early Childhood Development and Services Pathway within Human Services to look at the connections with education between those two different pathways and clusters. The rich experience of our partners and our post-secondary faculty that joined us in this committee really helped us drill down and make some decisions and recommendations for the education and training cluster that will really help us move forward in the coming years. On page 21 in your binders, you'll see the pre-review, Teach and Train Pathway. You'll see two courses at the introductory level, seven courses at the technical level that help teacher, future teacher candidates focus on pedagogy, student development, family and environmental interactions that impact students, community engagement, et cetera. And then there's two courses at the application level that really urge students to go out into an actual classroom placement or educational placement to get real-world and relevant experience to help them make a decision for what they want to do once they graduate. This is our post-review of the Teach and Train Pathway. The biggest addition that we made was the creation of a new course at the introductory level called Introduction to Education. This course will allow for schools to offer a more specialized course that will specifically allow students to investigate the educational career, or educational field and careers that holds more in depth. We also made some name changes to courses at the technical and application level to better reflect the content. And we reorganized some competencies between coaching and leadership and educational leadership to represent a better growth and rigor between the two courses and the two levels, excuse me. We did also look at the Early Childhood Development and Services Pathway. We did not have a full review of this pathway because it was outside of the scope of our cluster, but we did review it in regard to any overlap that needed to happen between education and training and early childhood education. This is the current pre-review pathway for Early Childhood Development and Services. It's very similar to the Teach and Train Pathway with the most notable division being Strands 1 and 2 at the technical level. In our pathways, and this is true across multiple clusters, some of them break out into strands that allow schools to choose a more specific path to cater courses and options for students within this pathway. And what we did with our post-review was to add some clarity to those strand titles by changing Strand 1 to the Early Childhood Education Strand to better clarify what the purpose of that strand was and rename Strand 2 to the Early Childhood Related Services Strand to demonstrate to schools and students that this secondary strand is for those looking at professions around young children. We also added a number of courses from the Teach and Train Pathway into the Early Childhood Development and Services Pathway. So schools that offer this pathway that have students that are more interested in education than related services could offer those opportunities to students if they so chose.
Good morning. I'm Kathy Camarena, and I'm the Education Program Consultant in the areas of Business and Government. This year, the cluster that was under review is Business Finance. Our review committee included finance industry representatives from banking, accounting, financial advising, insurance, consulting, and CEOs. And like the other committees, high school teachers from each high school classification in the state and post-secondary educators from technical community and four-year colleges. And I want to thank them for their service to students by volunteering their time. If you want to look at page 25 in your design sheets, you will see the Finance Pathway as it is now. After reviewing all of the research and updating the courses, the committee felt no major modifications to this pathway were necessary. There is one technical level course listed, Advanced Spreadsheet Applications. And they did suggest that that become a year-long course titled Applied Business Technologies. And that's reflected on the design sheet, the post-review design sheet on page 26. And that is all the recommendations for Finance. Thank you.
Thank you again. This is the second cluster we reviewed in our Design, Production, Repair, the Engineering Cluster. Again, thank you to the committee members who worked really hard on this throughout the course of the year and to Sidney Bergeron, who's our industry representative from Garmin. In addition to her, the industry partners, you know, that were a part of this was also Panasonic, Integra, and Textron, some others. And including also our seven post-secondary instructors and the nine high school instructors that really worked hard. And also a special thank you to our TSA State Advisor, who has served on this committee. Looking at first are the Aviation Production Pathway. This is on pages 27 and 28 in your folder. The courses reviewed again as far as content organized to help provide good scope and sequence for instructors and administrators, because they know they like that when it comes to content organization. The aviation production and the post-review, a lot of the courses were merged to provide a better fit and provide secondary-level programs' ability to offer this pathway. The, there was discussion to also maybe revisit this pathway further as we get more information from the National Advanced CTE on the new cluster model, because we kind of had a foreshadowing event that that might be coming. So that's, wants to be maybe relooked at when that comes available. The Energy Pathway Design Sheets are on pages 29 and 30. The pre-review, the major changes on the post-review is the change in the SIP code to be reflective of the pathway. And we also ended up adding a Foundations Electronics course to this because this Foundations Electronics course is in other pathways, so it helps make the pathway more reflective and more flexible for schools and administrators. The Engineering and Applied Mathematics Pathway, this is probably our most popular one in the engineering field. This is on page 31 and 32. After the review, the one major change was removing chemistry out of the pathway from the introductory level because it was an introductory level course and most of the time, introductory levels are, you know, geared toward eight, nine-grade students and not necessarily at the upper level. And so that was kind of removed out of the introductory level. Courses were still relevant. We worked the content to make sure it was relevant to industry and business partner needs and to make sure we had a great scope and sequence. What I want to focus my attention on is this new one that we're developing called Automation Engineering. This was reflective of the schools in the regions that were helped pioneer this event. They helped lead the discussion on the design because of the needs of their region, but it also was reflective and echoed by business industry across the state. It was also based on the research from our Kansas Commerce that points to that this is a targeted sector in our state as the growth of digital manufacturing is going on. Also, our increase in demand for supply chains and our online shipping and shopping of goods and services and our increase in manufacturing in the city of Kansas. The courses were pulled together to help be reflective of the industry and the new courses that were added. We did pull in some of the manufacturing courses and engineering courses, but we also added an Introduction to Manufacturing course. We added a Fundamentals Electrical Theory, which they thought was needed. But the most important ones was the Robotics 2. This course will be more reflective of robot applications in the workforce, but also robotic language programming and the human interface issues. The Automated Integrated Systems. This course is primarily focuses on the integration of things like pneumatics, hydraulics, and the programmable logical control circuits when it comes to manufacturing. And also the industrial maintenance systems, which helps enhance the understanding of manufacturing production with the focus of automation and industrial maintenance, which then also looks at students being able to know and be able to monitor and troubleshoot equipment when things arise. This could have been delayed for the manufacturing cluster, but we kind of didn't want to wait. We wanted to make sure we try to get this in as soon as possible because of the things that we were really looking at, the needs of the state. So.
Thank you again for letting me share about the Health Cluster and Health and Biosciences. Under this cluster, there are three pathways, Biochemistry, Biomedical, and Health Science. This is pre-review Health Science Pathway. As you probably all know, according to the Kansas Department of Labor, Kansas Hospital Association, and National Healthcare Associates, healthcare providers are experiencing workforce shortages, causing considerable strain on our healthcare systems. Therefore, it was vital that we updated this pathway to remain current with industry needs. However, there are no major changes to this pathway. 21 courses were updated. Two courses were added, both aligning to post-secondary opportunities and certifications. Those, that would be the EKG Technician and the Certified Patient Care Technician. Four courses were removed, Biology, AP Biology, due to graduation requirements, the Health Information Technology, and Dental Assisting. Both of those are entry-level positions where people train in-house and don't require a certification to be hired. There were no changes to eight of the courses. This is post-review. This is Biochemistry Pathway Pre-Review. And Biomedical Pathway Pre-Review. As we looked at the pre-review, we quickly noticed that eight courses were shared between the two pathways, and with the low attendance in biotechnology and agriculture, it made sense to merge all three under the umbrella of biotechnology. Many STEM occupations fall under biosciences, so it was determined that it needed to be all-encompassing of the occupations under biosciences, therefore lending the new title biotechnology. Within the Biomedical and Biochemistry Pathway, we reviewed eighteen courses, twelve courses were updated, two courses were removed, Biology and AP Biology, again, graduation requirements, and two courses, Biotechnology Essentials and Applied Biotechnology, were updated focusing on certifications in biotechnology. Six of the courses had no changes. This is the post-review design sheet. Thank you.
We have talked about the modernizing of the national framework. This has been going on for about eighteen months, and it was released June 6th. And at that time, there was a survey that closed July 7th on Sunday for states, educators, anyone who is interested to give feedback to that. So following the review of that validation survey, it will be finalized and presented to states in October. And in your, in the binder we're about to give you, it gives a lot more detail, and we can give you the link to that also. We currently have sixteen career clusters. With the recommendations of this proposed model that won't be final until October, they're recommending fourteen. So they're recommending, we used to have a STEM cluster, so as Kevin referred to, some of the changes are around the advanced manufacturing, which has the engineering as part of that. So in that first block, the advanced manufacturing and engineering are together. So some of these, we don't know what the final will be, but we're being mindful and watching that as it becomes available. So we're going to pass out a large binder to you, and it has all the labor market information for each of the clusters, and then be ready for questions?
I was gonna say, you might want to leave those there, we have limited space, so we can pick them up afterwards, thank you though. I mean, if anybody wants a binder, raise your hand and we'll get you one.
And it's a complete PowerPoint that was provided to the advisory committee that recommended the changes, so that gives you more detail. If you'd like anything further, please reach out to us, but now we stand for questions.
Natalie, could you go back to maybe one of Erin's, since she finished? That biotech's fine.
Okay.
Help the board just understand, does a student take all the intro classes? Does a student take, which, you know, and I know it varies a little bit with each, but just help them understand what a student looks like going through biotechnology?
Yes, so in a school, when a school applies for this pathway, they have to have a minimum along that left side in the gray area below the building. It says includes a minimum of three secondary level credits, so they must map at least three courses. A student, it's recommended that they take intro, where they're introduced to the different areas, technology, they may choose to focus on biomedical or biochemical, and then the application level allows them to apply in a real-world setting what they've learned through those technical skills. So a student, based upon their interests, they can take the introductory course and decide, this is something I'd like to go into further, perhaps this isn't what I was thinking, so that infinity loop, perhaps apply their math, ELA, science skills in another area, but they decide they're interested, they can go on and learn more at the technical level, and then the application level, that real-world setting, being able to apply that. What else is required is an articulation agreement, so the school and the parents are provided the information. If I'm interested in this particular area, I want to take more courses, I can do some of that in high school, or this is what I can look forward to after graduation. So a work-based learning component is included in that, whether it's applying the skills in a school-based enterprise setting, whether they have labs set up in school similar to the Shawnee Mission video that we looked at last time, or whether they're out working with a real-world business partner. So a student can choose, they can continue to go on or choose to apply their skills in another area.
Anne.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've been on this committee for, off and on for about twenty-five years, because I started on it back in the nineties as the businessperson from Southwestern Bell, and then I served on it when I was in the legislature as the legislative liaison, which we really need another one of, and then now for you guys. So if you really want a fun, interesting committee assignment, pick this one, because I'll just be home going through withdrawal. But we finally have a full complement of consultants and businesspeople. If you look at the committee members, these are amazing people who are really interested in knowing that our high school students are getting the best information about what jobs might be out there for them if they're interested, and they're invested in this, and they show up. If you look at the people who've served on the committees, it's not just businesspeople telling us what to do. These are businesspeople, educators, all kinds of folks come together to look at these pathways and make sure that our high schools are giving kids the best information about what kind of jobs are available. I mean, I don't know if you guys have been noticing, has anybody been to Manhattan lately and looked at the bioscience stuff that's going on over there? Oh my God, you wouldn't even recognize Manhattan, I mean, the jobs are amazing, they're just starting to open up. Panasonic's gonna have, what, like four thousand jobs? We have jobs by the tens of thousands coming to this state, and it's really important that kids know about it. I mean, isn't, I think one of the board's goals is that we let kids explore their passion and be who they are. This is how we do it. Those thirty-six pathways that are listed on that third poster you got allow kids to just, and we've had kids in here, right? I mean, all the time we have kids in, they go, we love exploring, trying to figure out what's in my future, and I just really want to commend our staff and our business partners for the amazing work they've done to try to help high schools, help kids get a better future. Are we tracking kids? No, but we are giving kids a chance to explore some really, really cool things. I know Olathe, God, they do an amazing job with their, with their, you know, Twenty-First Century Academies, just going to look at the bioscience one, they have kids going to international competitions in bioscience because they piqued their interest as freshmen or eighth graders in would this be something I'd want to explore? So if you have any concerns or questions, I'd just encourage you to ask Natalie or any one of the consultants, you know, what's going on in this pathway? I mean, we made a lot of changes in Ag, and you may wonder about that, but we're getting a lot of new districts interested in Ag. I mean, it is the number one industry in Kansas, right? So it'd be kind of important that our high schools are making sure that the classes they're teaching in Ag is staying up with where the business is going, and it's changing all the time. So anyway, very great job, cool work, and just thank you for this, it's amazing.
Well, thank you, Anne, for your years of service, and thank you very much. We did have two-hundred-and-seven people who volunteered their time, it was very helpful, and we look forward to our advisory quarterly meetings to learn what's trending.
Jim McNeese?
Wow, thank you very much, great presentation. Not to be a downer on this, but one of the challenges and opportunities, well, not even opportunity, what are the challenges and hurdles that you have implementing this plan across the state?
Challenges, opportunities, of course, we have all different sizes of schools represented. So we know that depending on where they are, what supports they have there, you know, it's a locally, what do we have in our community and how can they support us? Anyone who applies for a pathway at secondary level has their own advisory committee. So when I was in the classroom, that was so important, because they could come in and listen to the students, they would provide support. So I think, how far can we take them in our high school? What can we do to partner with our communities and our families? And then excel in CTE courses if those students find, this is what I'm really passionate about, they can start taking some of those courses and not pay tuition. Can always change their mind, but career and technical student organizations, there are challenges, but we'd like to say, no matter where you live, reach out to us, because I think that it's so important for students to know what's in their own community and as far as occupations. We want them to know what's there, so they can learn and grow and hopefully stay or come back to that community.
Well. We'll have a conversation sometime.
Okay.
It, it's the people who make the program work, and in some places, just us know people, there's no resources. In other places, the resources are underdeveloped in terms of the relationships between the educational institutions and the local businesses. You know, so this is a great framework, but I fear that putting it forward, it's going to get lost in potholes that aren't your doing, but you have to overcome.
Yes, thank you. We know that supporting those educators, families, and students is important, and providing the awareness of, you know, what can you do in your communities and who can you reach out to for support? One thing that I'd be amiss to not mention is there is a work-based learning intermediary in each of the five regions in Kansas, and their job is, if you're in a district and you aren't aware of the opportunities, please reach out to them, because they are in touch with those business professionals and can provide support. So that is something that the governor had in the budget and has supported, their Department of Commerce, they're at each of the workforce centers and those local workforce boards, and they're there to help twelve months a year currently.
And I think that awareness is really important, because a lot of it you have right here, it's wonderful, and it will benefit kids and communities so much, but many are unaware that this is even an opportunity, and what are the steps that I need to take to make that opportunity available to the kids in my area?
We just mailed out seven-hundred-and-fifty envelopes.
Seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand would be great.
So two to each building that would have an individual plan of study, and within that was the Cluster Handbook with thirty-six pathways. It was the labor market information as far as Kansas, what are the jobs in Kansas, and today's occupational book, higher paths, you know, the link to that, and the awareness piece to those work-based learning intermediaries. I believe that was everything was included in the packet, but we've got some excitement saying, I mean, this is great, can we have more? So, yes.
A special thank you to the, all the civilians, if you will, from business and industry and from the local areas that have come forth to guide us in this, and also to bring it back and make it happen in their communities. So thank you to them.
Yes, very much so.
Couple more questions, Betty?
Thank you. Actually, it's a statement, because this was really a great presentation, so well-thought-out and orchestrated. I, I love the idea of giving kind of a roadmap to our students. Many, many years ago, I was part of a presentation in a classroom, and it was an aside when the presenter from a local, from a company was talking about how much you could make at an entry level with their company. And it, the thing that I noticed, because the students were kind of sitting there like this and listening, being very polite, but not really interested, and when he threw out the dollar figure of what you could make, they were like, and I kind of smiled, and then the question came, well, what kind of classes should I be taking to do this? And of course, the presenter, I mean, he didn't come there with that idea, but he said, well, because we were in a science class, and he said, you're in the right place right now. It established the relevance for the students. It connected, what do I need to be doing now if I want to do this later? So I am so pleased, you know, when I, when I see this, because that does, number one, give students an opportunity, plus, when we talk about education and bringing all of the stakeholders together, industry is an important stakeholder, and so to see how you are utilizing industry for input on education, it, it puts it on that level of where you do have a seat at the table, what you have to say matters, and I know that there will be hurdles and obstacles, but this is such a great start, so thank you for the presentation.
Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Natalie, if we have questions, do we just email those to you?
Yes, that would be great.
Okay, and then, and then next month, will we have some discussion time before we vote on this, to talk about some more things, after we get some feedback from?
I imagine you'll come back before us next month, we'll have opportunity for conversation then.
Yes.
And then just one clarification, a student would not have to choose a pathway, correct?
No.
They don't have to, they can just move forward, like, kind of like the Twenty-First Century program, they just stay at their high school, they don't have to go into a specific academy, they, they would just stay there and then just go through with normal edu, regular education.
So it is set up different locally. Certainly, these are elective courses, you know, some, if a student chooses to participate, there are some of the larger schools who may have a hallway that's painted a certain color for law and public safety, but because they're applying their science, math, and English, so in a smaller school, yes, there are some academies though, for example, the CAPS Academy, students in that area are able to travel there and interact with students from different districts to participate, but it certainly is only their elective courses that, I mean, they travel part of the day.
Right, correct.
Does that answer the question?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay, last one, and then we're gonna move on, Anne?
Yeah, just to follow up on what Michelle said, even in Olathe with the amazing Twenty-First Century Academies, when I visited there when Olathe West was opening, the director told me fewer than twenty percent of the kids in Olathe high schools are in a pathway. So, you know, we have a lot of work to do to let them know what's available, it may be higher now, but certainly no requirement any kid gets in a pathway.
Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie and team, and thank you to everyone who serves on this committee, that's a long list, I'm sure it's a big-time investment, so thank you all.
Thank you.
Board members, we will take a ten-minute break, we'll be back at ten-thirty-five. Welcome, Dr. J.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Watson, thank you for the time for Dr. Proctor and I to present about KISA. In keeping with tradition, we need to start off with the National Day of what we're celebrating. And I just, I don't mean to diminish you in any way, but it was not a bumper crop of things to celebrate today. So the only one that I thought might resonate with some of you is it's National Pina Colada Day. So, you know, once the board meeting is over. It's also, it's also a famous scientist's birthday. And I wonder if anybody might guess what this famous, who this famous scientist is who has a birthday on July 10th? Not among the living. You see his name a lot out on the road.
Exit?
I was a science teacher. I don't recall an exit as a scientist, but Tesla, Nikolai Tesla. And I looked up a quote of his that I thought really kind of sets the context for KISA. And his quote was, "The scientific man does not aim at immediate results. His duty is to lay the foundation for those who are to come and point the way." And so when we think about, yes, I know KISA is not a science experiment, but KISA, the premise holds true, that what we're building with KISA is a solid foundation from which we can change the trajectory of kids' lives, right? We can improve student outcomes. And just know this, that takes time. That takes time. Tesla came up with all these things around the alternating current, right? But that was a big piece of radio becoming a thing that we can partake in. Tesla was probably not around for that. So I think we just need to remember that this is a solid structure we're building to where we can put ourselves and the fruits of our labor may not be seen when we're in these positions we're in right now. And the fruits of our labors being kids know and can do more. And so I just wanted to start with that. Today, we're going to cover, I want to cover with the board a check-in summary. We did all these check-ins from January to June. I want to show you some of the data that we pulled from systems through those check-ins. I want to talk to the private school systems and the Cognia model and how we have come to an agreement on all of those things. Ben is going to walk through a systems activities through year one. What does year one look like for a system? So he's going to walk through that with the board. And then at the end, there will be time for action on the actionable model of KISA. So the check-ins, this was, the whole idea behind the check-ins was to increase the relationship and the connection between KSDE and systems around what I think is the most important part of school, and that's school improvement. And so it's to increase that connection. It's also a way to help, it's meant to help systems stay on track with the plans that they have. Things happen during a school year. A lot of things happen during a school year, and sometimes it results in that system deviating from a plan they've had. If they know that every year, Gene Rush is going to sit down with us and talk to us about our progress, that might help with that execution piece that's really, really difficult. So that's really the premise behind the KISA check-ins. I want to take a moment to thank our Region 12 Comprehensive Center, specifically Katie Allen, Dylan Creacher and Dr. Doug Meckel. They serve on a team that really were instrumental in us pulling these check-ins together. They provided us really good, strong survey questions and vetted those. So we were very thankful. And Dylan actually put together this summary that I'm going to share with you. So without further ado, the KISA check-ins, these were the purpose statements for the check-ins for this past, basically, January to June. We wanted to establish that relationship. We wanted to make sure we're making connections in person. We wanted to create this cadence of consistent support so systems know when to expect that support coming through. We really wanted to learn a lot about their current school improvement process and their journey through accreditation. And I would say these check-ins, this last round, or first round really, were more about 80% of the system sharing what they're doing and 20% of us talking about KISA 2.0, which was a really good ratio as we went into, move forward. So, and again, we wanted to set the stage for KISA 2.0. They took place, we started in January, we got through, June 12th was our last day of check-ins. And that's more than 300 in-person check-ins at the systems location. So I'm very thankful for the team that I have, Amber Miller in the West, Mindy Bruce in the Central, Gene Rush here in the East, and then Myron Melton and I, working with the private systems with our suburban, our urban, our special purpose schools, culminated in that many in-person check-ins. I know Dr. Watson talked yesterday about how many engagements Ben and I have been out talking about KISA 2.0. You can add to that number over 300 other engagements. So a lot of engagement along the way. So here's a summary. The systems at the end of our check-in, which was a two-hour block of time, at the end, we asked them to complete a feedback survey. We had 280 submissions with 251 that were actually completed. So we had some incompletes. So this data that I'm going to share with you is just based on those 251 responses. I'm not satisfied with that response rate. It's a high response rate in terms of, if you're looking at research, but not satisfied with that in any way, so we'll look to do better in the future. So a few of the questions were asking about the satisfaction with the check-ins. So you can see this is, the rating system is strongly agree on the left, all the way down to strongly disagree. And so the prompts for the satisfaction part of it was, I'm satisfied with the quality of the information, the resources provided. You can see a high level of strongly agree and agree, low level of disagree and strongly disagree. Same for the session was well-designed and the information and resources provided were well-aligned to that system's needs, which is really, really important. The actionability of the check-in information, which was a little bit more difficult because there wasn't a lot of action to take. We're in the learning year, we're learning more about KISA 2.0, but the check-in will enable the system and accomplishing their goals helped them with that. This meeting was a productive use of our time. That was our number one question that we tracked as a team. We wanted to make sure this was a productive use of time. Schools don't have a lot of time. So we wanted to make sure this was time well-spent. So it was great to see a lot of strongly agree and agree for that one. And then the feedback provided was actionable, again, a little less because a lot of the feedback was just kind of preliminary. The quality of the check-in feedback, so there was, I would say, a small amount of feedback that we would provide during these check-ins, but you can see large amounts of strongly agree and agree. And then with the, this is the last slide I'll share on the summary. This is perception data. And so the rating changed. We went to, to a great extent, on the left, down to not at all. And so the, I'll just highlight the last question there in green. To what extent did the check-in support your feeling of readiness for KISA 2.0? That was our other really important question that we tracked. And we really wanted to get a feel for where people were heading into KISA 2.0. So again, large amounts to a great extent, somewhat, and a lot of that somewhat is just not knowing. Really, all there is to know about KISA 2.0 is you go into it. And while there will always be a semblance of, there's going to be changes, improvements made along the way, we wanted to impart at least at the front end, this is what we know at this point. And so I think the perceptions were good for that question. But this helped us drive KISA 2.0. It also helped us to improve and look at things, how we can improve next year with our check-ins. So that's just a brief summary of our KISA check-ins. You can expect that every December, for sure, every July, coming back before the board and sharing data like this on the process of check-ins and working through that. So I'm going to switch gears and talk about private systems and Cognia. I know the board is well aware. I know the board is well aware of this. We, we, um, were very excited to talk with our private systems and make this work. We, we imparted to them at the front end that we really would like, um, really it was talking with our Lutheran schools and the Kansas City Archdiocese. Our intent to, we really want them to stay in KISA as, as state accreditation. And to their credit, they really listened to that and we, we basically proposed a model that they have both, both Lutheran, Lutheran schools and the Kansas City Archdiocese have indicated, yes, we want to stay in KISA. And so I'll, I'll just walk through a little bit of that. Uh, and then I'll, I'll get into the, the Cognia side of things. When we're talking about, uh, the Archdiocese of Kansas City and the Lutheran schools, the board knows that they're very building-based. And that's really how they approached KISA 1.0. So we had this, a little bit of a, what do we do here when you're talking about a system accreditation for KISA? And then a more building-based improvement model for those, for those schools. So we successfully co-created a model that satisfies both. You can stay with that building level, more autonomy at the building level, but yet satisfy the, the expectations of KISA. And basically what that will look like is they will both develop leadership, a, a collaborative leadership group that represents different parts of Lutheran schools geographically. And then same for the Archdiocese of Kansas City. So the Archdiocese has some, I guess they call them deaneries. They are regions. And so they're looking at those five deaneries within the Archdiocese, developing a leadership group, and that will be their KISA leadership team. They would, will attend the check-ins. They'll attend the, the, uh, school improvement days. And that allows for that governance structure that they have to also be represented in KISA. And then we'll just continue to make progress, monitor progress and make adjustments as necessary. This is a, just really a one-year deal as we get started into this, and we'll just learn more as we go along the way. And then with Cognia, uh, we've been meeting with Nancy Bowles and Ann Connor throughout the, the spring with Cognia. And we have successfully co-created a model that again satisfies both the expectations of KISA and Cognia. We've met recently with our public school systems and talked them through how that will work. Our public school systems that choose Cognia, and they're also obviously in KISA. What we found was there's already a, a strong alignment between the four fundamentals in KISA and the four what they call key characteristics in Cognia. A lot of alignment there. We already have established joint participation, Cognia and KSDE in the check-ins and school improvement days, and that will continue. So Nancy Bowles will be at school improvement days along with systems that are in Cognia and KISA. We also provided an option for Cognia public school systems to join what we call a hybrid school improvement cohort. And this was based on what the public schools that are in Cognia shared with us. That if they, they would like the option to be part of a, of a, of a group for school improvement days that include at least one other Cognia public school system. So if you think about independents, they are a Cognia system down in Southeast Kansas. Fredonia is also a Cognia school. They're in different groups right now. What we're going to do is move independents into that group. So there's at least two Cognia. So we're, we're making that, uh, we're making that an option. And then also years one and four, when you're in Cognia, they're on a six-year model. Years one and four, it's a little bit more intensive on the, the Cognia work. There's some onsite visits. So we've said to those public school systems that are in Cognia, you do not have to participate in the school improvement days on, in years one and four. So, and, and everybody, we've talked through that and people seem to be on board with that. So we're going to move forward with that. So I know that there's a lot of information here, but I think in the interest of time, we'll go ahead and move on to, uh, the system walkthrough. But at the end, if you have any particular questions around any of the KISA check-ins or these private systems and the Cognia model that we've developed, I'd be happy. And I do want to say thank you to Nancy Bowles and Ann Connor, the Archdiocese of Kansas City, the Lutheran schools, Jim Bradshaw's here today. It's great to see Jim here. And cares, Nick Campagnone and Jamie Finkeldie. Nick's been instrumental in this. He shared with me basically an outline of what I just shared. So really appreciate them being here today and their partnership through this. I'll turn it over to Ben.
Thanks, Jay, and thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Dr. Watson, you've heard a lot of updates from us over the past six months on KISA 2.0. And we appreciate all the attention, all the patience, all the questions and critique and feedback, and that, that process continues today. What I want to provide is just a, I call it a hypothetical. We're going to use an actual school district and just walk through this year one experience. What, what would this system, based on all the details that go into these things that you've heard over the past six months? What would that, what would that system potentially do around this KISA 2.0 framework? And I chose the district that I know best, uh, the one that I was in for a decade and that I, I still live in this community. Heston USD 460. First of all, uh, very unique mascot, the name Swathers. And then, uh, if you could ever identify that as a, a piece of, of farm equipment, uh, from the mascot, but it's one that our, our community is very proud of. This is a, a medium-sized district of about 850 students. Currently, there are three buildings in that district. That's going to change here before too long because of a bond issue that was passed in their building. Some important components or characteristics as it relates to the KISA collaboration process. So this particular system has a very active district leadership team, building leadership team and site council. And we believe that all three of those entities within school systems are going to be very important as we talk through how we collaborate around school improvement. Pretty low at-risk population in the district. There's a lot of, uh, advantages, uh, of working in, in Heston USD 460, veteran staff, all those things that position you well to do really good work in a, in a school setting. So just want to walk through very quickly the, the collaboration process using specific dates and details for this particular school system and how it could look in 24, 25. So the first component of the collaboration process would be what we're calling the activation of a district leadership team, uh, structure or format. And what we found is, as Jay and I went out and visited with a lot of our school districts through our informational sessions specifically, we found that not everyone has a, an active or an effective district leadership team, and we've been encouraging that. And we have guidance on what that can look like. We feel like that's a, a critical structure to develop for overall team-oriented leadership that can really keep track of progress that's being made. I don't think it's common to not have a district leadership team, but it, it does happen. And so that's a, a primary step that a system would need to take. But it's what does your district leadership team focus on? And we need to elevate instruction as, as part of that focus. So, uh, for this particular system, that activation would occur. It would be easy to do because they already have that in place like many of our school systems. And then you have that opportunity to attend this fall, uh, one of these second rounds of, of KISA informational sessions. So this system, uh, doesn't have their school improvement day until the spring. We know some are going to start in September and run all the way through, uh, April. So others won't have their school improvement day until later in the school year. We know that adds a little, I call it kind of a clunkiness in year one. And there's always trade-offs. So we're making the investment to ensure that we can facilitate that logistically. And that's why you have some early, some late. We feel like after year one, that's going to all self-correct. And you just, on an annual basis, it doesn't really matter when your school improvement, improvement day would be or when your check-in is. But for this system, they're going to be meeting with Mindy Bruce in late January in preparation for that school improvement Ja- uh, day. And Jay's going to talk through a little bit what that check-in for year two would look like. It looked a little bit different in year one. So then they're going to move forward to their school improvement day, which happens on March 3rd. And they'll meet with some like systems in their area, which include Remington Haven and Hillsborough. There's some rivalries there, and I think that's okay. There's a, a healthy nature to some of those small-town rivalries. Large school rivalry, rivalries too, I'm sure. But these folks would know each other pretty well. They're going to get to know each other better. And they're going to sit down and talk about school improvement and instruction and, and those things that aren't always main topics as school systems get together. So from there, they're going to leave and we, we'll, uh, kind of talk through the format of that school improvement day with you today as well. But they're going to leave there and they're going to focus on school community engagement and start talking to their Board of Education, their staff. That's where that site council structure is going to be very important as well as a way to engage students and community members and families. And, uh, we feel like having several months to be able to go back and talk about priorities is very important as that broader school community component. And then they will, uh, convene as a district leadership team and submit that action plan. And that timeline for them would be around mid-May. We would look for that action plan to be submitted. And then our team would be able to review that. And, uh, as I walked through this particular district's hypothetical action plan, we're actually testing that out now and, and feel really good about the process that we're putting in place for those reviews. And then they just begin implementation for them. It works out very well to be, really begin implementation in that 25, 26 school year. So just a, a quick walkthrough for this system, what they would experience in year one. As, uh, we move forward with this concept of district leadership teams and building leadership teams, we have some guidance on who we would recommend being a part of that. For a school improvement day, uh, for a regional check-in, we want consistency on who is coming to those meetings. And so for example, with, uh, Heston USD 460 DLT, this is how it would be comprised, again hypothetically, but more than likely it would look something like a superintendent, somebody who oversees curriculum, uh, building administrators at the different buildings. There would be classroom teachers, special education representation, and English language learner representation as part of that, uh, district leadership team that really oversees the KISA process. And again, we'll have guidance, we'll provide guidance for any system if they're initiating a district leadership team and want that guidance. I'm going to let Jay talk a little bit about the, the meeting that the district leadership team will have with regional executives.
Thanks, Ben.
Can we do one quick question?
Oh, sure.
I'm curious to go back, Ben, on your, so the check-in school improvement days, I don't see any parents on there. I'm kind of, or I didn't see any board members on there.
So they're going to, once they do the school improvement day, that's where they're going to engage board members and parents after that. So we'll talk through the sequencing of that. Usually you wouldn't see a, a parent or a board member, sometimes you would on a district leadership team, but you would see that on a site council. And so when you leave that meeting, you're going to go and engage those folks.
I guess, I guess, why not?
Why, why not on this day?
Why not?
I would, I would say we wouldn't limit that. I mean, if a system wanted to have that, that would be fine. We, we're going to limit it to 10 people. So there's just a, kind of a logistic component that we wouldn't want a district leadership team to have more than 10 because we're talking about four to five systems. And so we're, we're trying to keep it less than 50 in a room. So that'd be part of the, just the logistical challenge.
And the district leadership team is staff?
Primarily, yes.
Okay. Well, we'll let you get to the end, then we'll do questions.
No, you're good. So with the, the district leadership team that Ben just walked through, when they meet with the regional executives, we call that a check-in. So in this example, in January, um, Heston would meet with Mindy Bruce at Heston for a couple of hours. And our primary purpose for this round of check-ins is to make sure the system knows what to expect at the school improvement day. So the, these check-ins are slotted up at least a month in advance of the school improvement day. And we want to walk the system through, this is what you can expect at the school improvement day. You're going to walk through some guided reflection questions that should help you narrow down to what actions you need to be taking moving forward. And also some data, their, their data, so they can review their data and then also be able to find different data resources to prepare for that school improvement day. So that's really the, the purpose. I can see that the, the, the check-ins this round would be more, it would be reversed from the first round. It'd be more 80% of us sharing what's going on, then 20% of the, the systems asking questions and clarifying. And then, uh, that last step, the meeting will be held at the district office and it's typically around two hours. We're having trouble fitting everything into two hours, but we're going to do that for sure. And then the school improvement day, after the check-in, the district leadership team, that same team we checked in with, will attend a school improvement day. And as Ben said, they would be with like systems, so they'd have that chance to collaboration, to collaborate with like systems. We think that is a key piece to all of this. If you talk to systems, they don't find that they have a lot of time to talk about at this level, school improvement with their peers. Review their data, identify data resources that are really important. Discuss those guided reflective questions to identify their needs and determine action. Develop or review that plan for action. And then plan to go back and engage this, the, the broader school community in that action plan. So that's really the, the, kind of the flow for the school improvement days, at least for, for this year. I'll turn it back over to Ben.
So just as an example of the type of data that we would have the systems reviewing, this is actual USD 460 data. I just pulled a, a, a kind of a longitudinal report. We're going to house that, that data that they would look at in one location, so it's very easy to pull up. So one of the things that you'll notice on the left is just, I'd call it kind of a stagnating level-one performance. So that would be identifiable just with that kind of overarching view of what their academic data is telling them. They're also looking at post-secondary effective rates, graduation rates, and just, uh, analyzing some of that higher-level data. Also feel like in year one, it's very critical that we're helping systems understand where to access kind of a deeper dive into the data. We've got data housed in different locations that, that systems have access to. And what we found is we've initiated conversation, especially at the, the system level. Not everybody is accessing that data. Uh, some don't know where to access certain types of data. So we don't, we want to not only equip, equip them with the ability to look at their data, but also understand where to find different types of, of student performance data that's aggregate all the way down to the student level. So it's going to be a combination of data analysis and also just building capacity to understand where to access different types of data. Jay mentioned the, the guided reflective questions. This is going to be a, a part of the activity that we want to do with school systems where they can really identify the current state within that school improvement model and framework. And what, as, as I was thinking about this particular system, looking at the data, really working through those questions just as, as I might with the district leadership team. One of the things that stood out as a potential action item for this particular system is the lack of standards reference data throughout a school year. So as you look at your, your data, you notice that especially in ELA and science, you see stagnating data or data that's not necessarily improving. Really, in the, in the KISA 1.0 iteration, that system is going to look pretty good because they're well above the state average. But as they look at locally that data, they would notice very quickly that it's, it's not improving. And having conversations around that's very important. And a way to identify areas of improvement could be onboarding standards reference data throughout a school year that can inform instruction. That would be the focus of this particular action plan. And the district leadership team is then able to talk through that and how they can take action and move in that direction. So this is where, after they leave the school improvement day, this is that school community engagement. And we have different components of that that we believe are important. We believe that the local Board of Education is a critical element. And that's where that superintendent, being a part of the district leadership team, we feel like is very critical. Because that's the connection between the work in the school and the Board of Education that's setting policy. So as part of that school improvement day, you're developing your plan, not only to potentially take action within the school improvement model, but also to go back and engage your Board of Education and what you're learning and what you're deciding as a district leadership team. We feel like that extended building leadership team is very critical. So not only having a district component to that, but who is overseeing as a team, the leadership at the building level is a, a critical piece that can then be a connection with all staff. And again, that, that site council or that, uh, mechanism that the school district has to be able to engage parents and community members and students, we feel like all of those are very important parts of the school community that need, need to be a part of the process, the development process. That need, need to be a part of the process, the development process in order to, to finalize that action plan, knowing that, that you're really setting that direction. Early on, even when you're meeting with those regional executives. So once all of that collaboration has occurred, and again, we believe that over a two-month period, all that can happen. The district would then submit that action plan to KSDE. And using a, a rubric that we're developing, we would be able to provide feedback on that action plan, making sure that it's, it makes sense. It's connected to the school improvement model. I mentioned that, that we've been testing this out. So walking through this particular action plan, I've been working with our research and evaluation team who's developing the tools to be able to do that evaluation. And they're providing real feedback. And it's been, as a, a former superintendent, extremely helpful and productive. And I've been able to take that feedback, make adjustments to the action plan. And I'm getting ready to resubmit that to see if I am meeting the expectations of our team. So here are some of the components of the action plan. So when a school system is actually going through the KISA application, here are the things that they would be addressing. So we believe that, that you're going to emphasize certain fundamentals within that school improvement model based on the action that you're taking. So you'd be able to identify those fundamentals, whether it's structured literacy or standards alignment or balanced assessment, quality instruction. It may be all four, it may be one. In this particular case, you're going to see that we're, we're really elevating two within this particular action plan. You're going to identify the structures and lead indicators based on the right action for you and the needs that you have and the gaps that you've identified. You're going to identify measures of progress. So how will you know in the short term and in the long term that you're making progress with implementation and solidify that upfront? And we'll look at what those can be. You're going to answer the question, why is this the right action for you? So again, for this particular system, even though they have relatively high performance, they want to improve. They want to move students out of level one, that's a stagnating metric for them. And so onboarding this idea of a, a along the way or through year formative assessment process where they can see. How are our students performing against standards? That's a new data point for them. And being able to build that in their system, we feel like is critical. So they're going to look at, what does the current data say? What's the current evidence of performance related to that particular action? And then what are the next actions that they, they may need to take? So that's that, always keeping their, their eye on the whole plan or, or what needs to come next? Because we know that you're going to build upon the actions that you take initially. So this is the school improvement model. You've seen this a number of times. Again, this represents the whole, you have fundamental structures, lead indicators. And we've really narrowed that measure of progress on the far right to include a specific measure. And then what does that measure look like in the short term and in the long term? So for this particular system, this is an actual walkthrough of how their action plan could look. So one of the things that they want to do is, is focus on standards alignment. Again, they're seeing that they're not improving in level one performance. They're not growing levels three and four. It's, it's, it stayed pretty flat. And so they're talking through, what are we doing with standards? Do our students really know standards? Do our teachers know their standards? How do we know how students are performing beyond just that summative measure at the end of the year? So really focused on that particular fundamental, along with the assessment piece. And as we walk through their actions, you'll see connections back to those two fundamentals. So they're looking specifically at professional learning. So what are they doing around professional learning associated with standards alignment? And building a, a more balanced assessment so they have standards reference data throughout the school year. So you'll see that lead indicator represents professional development that accounts for the alignment of classroom practice to state standards. That's, that's going to be the focus for them. And then they're going to develop measures of progress associated with that. And utilize for the first time, the, the many formative assessments that KSd has had for quite some time. That, that we know not a lot of people use, maybe not a lot of people even know about, that we believe is a very important type of action to take. So for them, they're going to onboard those many assessments. And within six months, they want 100% of the applicable staff, meaning those that, that teach math and science and ELA. That have interim assessments, they want 100% of those teachers trained in how to implement those assessments. So that they can now have a, a formative assessment model that tells their teachers how students are performing against standards in an ongoing way. Not just on a summative assessment. So their six-month target is to do that professional development, conduct that professional development. And within a year, they want to build that professional development into their professional development plan. So they want to add this new data point that tells their teachers and informs their teachers on standards performance throughout the school year. In a way that, that already exists that they can now take advantage of. Additionally, a, a way to measure progress is to ask teachers, how is that going for you? So we believe that teacher perception in this is important. So we don't want to just train you, we want to make sure that you feel confident that you can use that new data point in a way that informs instruction for your team and for you individually. And so we would develop in this system a way to measure that. So we're looking, after the training, do you feel like you're equipped to be able to do that? And then after a year, we're really starting to talk about implementation. Do you feel like the implementation of that new metric and that new assessment is helping you? So just an ongoing way to measure is what we're doing, working is having the intended effect that we think it can. So that's really that professional development structure you're building. This new assessment into the professional development that you do within that school system. And then with tiered systems of support, you'll notice the lead indicator is about data analysis. And for much of this school system, you'll see that it includes screening for risk. And I would say that at the elementary school for this school system, they do that extremely well. And they collaborate on that data extremely well. And so if a student has skill deficits, they're addressing that through their tiered system of support, like many of our, especially lower grade levels across the state are doing. What we want to do is now add in that data point that says, are they able to, to learn standards? Just like we've assessed risks, we want to assess standards. And that's going to be a new data point that's built into that collaboration that teachers can do. And the way that we can measure that, so now they're, they're really looking at the utilization of that mini formative assessment that they've not utilized in the past. As a way to, to determine our students' learning standards throughout the year. A six-month target would be that a, a teacher is now utilizing that within a unit or two during that school year. So they've been trained, now they're utilizing that, we're asking them how that's going through those perception surveys. And then within a year, assuming that all that's going well and that we've made the adjustments that we need to based on the data. Now you're implementing that throughout the school year as you begin the following school year. So you've been trained in the mini formative assessment. And now your teachers are beginning to utilize that as part of this action plan. Another element that our team has talked about as a, again, this idea of a measure of progress that could be a universal measure. And this would tie directly to structured literacy would be just seeing how we can track the number of teachers that are being trained. In the science of reading and structured literacy. As we think about just what could apply as a measure of progress for all systems all the time. So just to, to finalize the action plan, again, they're going to answer the question, why is this the right action? Just to, to solidify that this is a high leverage action for this system. Again, they have not accessed standards reference data throughout the school year. They believe that that's important to onboard. Their current evidence would say they have stagnating data when it comes to student performance against standards. So providing better information for teachers to utilize throughout the school year, they believe would be a very high leverage action for them. The resources they would need would be the training to go along with the assessment. It's new. And so being able to take your teachers through that training and building that into your professional development. You would need to develop tools to be able to ask your staff how they feel the training is going, how they feel implementation is going. And really how you're, you're updating your professional development plan to include that new data point. And then your district leadership team, again, is always thinking about, where do we go from here? So now we have, teachers have access to new data. How do we build upon that? And that's where a year two transition would start to occur. So now they're thinking about, how do we build professional development or professional collaboration guidance? So that teachers are talking about this new data that we now have access to. An additional item would be to truly have a balanced assessment system. You would combine that many tests with an interim assessment that we have through KSd that again, not a lot of people utilize. This would change that. So now teachers have access to more data throughout the year that standards referenced, building that into their year two plan. Then I'll let Jay talk a little bit about what would happen in terms of an accreditation determination based on what we proposed in 24, 25.
So, once Heston has submitted their action plan, then they would be reviewed for, in two of the three areas for accreditation at the end of 24, 25. I'll show you the timeline for years two and three. But for 24, 25, Heston would be reviewed in all of the compliance areas. Are they meeting the standard in all 14 of those areas? And then school improvement, again, to, to what Ben mentioned, their action plan would be reviewed by KSd. For completeness, alignment and clarity. And then provided feedback to that system. So they're off on the right foot with that action plan. And then that, their system's status, whether it's accredited with conditions, accredited, not accredited. That would be submitted and shared with the state board in July of 2025. This is, shows the timeline, so we just went through year one. Year two, we would add to the evaluation side, evaluating not only the, looking at their action plan, making sure it's clear, it's complete. But also starting to look at, are they actually doing what they said they intended to do? So the actions that they spent all this next year identifying, are they actually implementing that? And that's, that's, that's part of the evaluation then for year two. Then in year three, you would have the same, again, compliance, school improvement. Then we would add the outcomes in 26, 27 as an evaluative piece in, in part of an accreditation decision. So that would be the, that the timeline, three years out, starting next year and heading into 26, 27. I think Ben wanted to talk a little bit about structured literacy.
So when we presented last month, we talked about if the, if the board has a. I guess, an interest in this, we would be able to create a, a structured literacy component that would need to be addressed as part of the action planning process. So if that be, is a, is a particular priority that you would want to focus on. That could be something that we build into our facilitator training, our school improvement day, where everyone would have to address how they're implementing structured literacy within their school system as an option for the state board. We believe that over time, there may be other things that come up. I, I think Dr. Harwood would, would probably in a, maybe a year propose that we do something similar with at-risk. You know, there may be things that, that the state board says has to be a priority, or we have to really get the ball rolling in every school system. We know that most schools are doing a lot of work around structured literacy, but there are some who haven't started that process yet. And, and the board could say as part of the action that you take, that you want that to be accounted for, for any system's action plan. We do plan to track the number of teachers who are trained or who are in training around structured literacy as a, like we talked about, a universal measure of progress. But we just wanted to present that as an option for the state board. If it's something that you would want us to consider, it could become a, a required component of a, of an action plan or of that KISA 2.0 process.
So that concludes our time. This is the action for July. I think we share with this, with the board in June. So now it'd be the time, if we have, if anybody has any questions, we'll stand for those.
Betty.
What you presented today, is this new information?
It's not new information. It's actually going deeper into the information that we've already provided in the past.
Probably for me and. I am so absolutely turned around on this. And I don't mean turned around in terms of I was here and now I'm confused. I guess that's a better word. Cause there's so many ifs and we could, that I don't know exactly what it is you're presenting to. I should say to me, I might be the only one that's confused. And, and if so, I guess it would be reflected, but. I, I was sitting here going, okay, we, we, we talked about this in depth. And there were some things you were going to tweak. And then it's some more things. And I don't know in terms of a final product. What it is that I have, I mean, you've done an outstanding job of confusing me. So that's where I am.
You're not the first person that I've had that effect on. But I, I, I do want you to know that this was basically next year, if you're a system, what next year looks like. So it got into a lot of the details of the resources. But if, if you remember, the accreditation areas are school, school improvement. Which is that action plan that Ben was talking about. It's student outcomes and it's compliance. Those are the three areas for accreditation. And we have a timeline of how you, systems will be evaluated. And we also have a process to support systems along the way. And that's an every-year look. So I don't know if that helps, but what we've talked about leading up to today is really the model that we're asking for action from the state board.
Jim Porter.
Two ques, two questions. First, go back to the structured literacy side. It will not shock anybody to know that I would support that. So when it comes to, to that point, I really would support tracking that. Now go back about two more slides. Where it, where it talks about recommendations to the state board. You've probably said this, but if he, I didn't catch it. Who makes the determination or where is the determination made about whether, about the accreditation recommendation? Whether or not it's accredited, full accredited or credited, whatever we're using for the other one. Or not accredited. How is that decision made before, how, how is the, the recommendation decision made before it comes to us?
So that would be made by the ARC. If, if there's a change in status for a system from accredited down to anything less than accredited, that would be made by the ARC. And we have a process to go through where there's an evaluation by KSd. And then if thing, if systems are not meeting the standard in a certain area, they would then be referred to the ARC. And the ARC would then review that system and make a recommendation of accreditation.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Kathy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ben, I know this is a detailed part of what you were giving, going through Heston's whole story. But when you're talking about many tests and the data being collected, are we talking about now there is more data being collected from school districts? That KSd is collecting?
It would just be the school system collecting that data. So it would be, it would be new data for the school system. So that, that many assessment, I, I know our assessment team has presented on this. And again, we're just using this as an example. Of, of how we could change professional behavior, professional action. So in this particular case, the, the data point would be at the classroom level, the teacher having access to how students are performing against a particular standard. So that's how those many tests, they're all teacher oriented. So it's nothing that comes to KSd or it would be solely for them that starts to inform their instructional practice. So for a lot of our school systems, the gap area is they do a, a, a good job of assessing skill or risk associated with skill. We, we, we see that through our MTSS model. Oftentimes the gap is teachers don't know how their students are performing against standards. And so when we think about improving student knowledge and ability related to standards, giving the teacher access to data that tells them, in this case, it could be every day. Or used very, very frequently, how the student is performing against the standard. They can use that information to inform instruction all throughout the school year. You know, we test students every spring with the summer. You know, we test students every spring with the summative assessment. Very few teachers are gonna be able to utilize that.
Right.
No teachers will be able to utilize it to impact the students they just had.
Right.
They can make decisions based on that. So this is providing a new data point that goes directly to the teacher, so they can understand how students are performing along the way, yes.
So how would you say it's different from a teacher in a classroom just giving a test over the material they've been teaching?
That's, that's the, the potential issue is knowing certainly that it's, that it's directly connected to the standard. And I think the, while the teacher may have a great resource, like we talked about with materials yesterday, not all of those are gonna be aligned to our standards. So this provides that direct connection to the standard for the teacher that ultimately, you know, engages that metric at the end of the year as well.
So it would be a test that I would assume they would grade and use?
The, the, it, it's, it's automatic in that that happens for them, so they, they, it's, it's very little burden on the teacher, and the system allows them to do that very efficiently.
So it's an electronic, completely electronic?
Yes.
Gotcha. But the teacher knows what the test questions are?
They would be able to select those, and that'd be part of the training that they would go through to be able to onboard that particular assessment.
Unlike the state assessment, they know exactly what they're giving their students
Yes.
and what those answers are and how that's relating.
Yeah. And, and one thing is we, as we start to move these types of things forward, providing the board with, with an overview of what that looks like. Done that over the years, but doing that as we think this will be an area that a lot of people want to focus on.
So overall, with this KISA model, would you say there is any more data than has been in the past being collected from school districts?
The, the data that would be collected would be more that measure of progress data. So it's much more, how is the system doing in implementing whatever the action is that they decided to take? As far as new data that we would, we would utilize for, for student performance, that, I don't think that really changes. It's just more, what does the system have access to that can help inform instruction? Would be the big thing.
So as in teaching them how to use data that's already collected?
In a lot of cases, yes. We, we would say that data literacy or knowing how to use the data that you currently have is a critical component of that. And then, again, that, that gap area is, do you know how students are performing throughout a school year against the standard? That'd be the, kind of the new data point that not a lot of systems are accessing right now.
Okay, thank you. We're going to take a five-minute break. We'll be right back, 11:35. Okay, we're back. Thank you for the break. We will pick up with Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So so many, I'm kinda like Betty, so many, so many questions swirling around, and, and then yesterday, you know, we heard that there's going to be, you know, six more people that have to collect data based off of a law that they just passed. We have to collect more data on at-risk kids, and it's a lot of, it's a lot of data on, on every kid. It just seems like it grows and grows and grows, and it doesn't seem like, to me, it doesn't seem like it makes education better overall. More, more data doesn't always equate to a better education. Because a lot of, we have, in these systems, we have individuals. We have teachers that have come from maybe all over the world, or country, or whatever, and a lot of them grew up here in Kansas. They have different, unique ways of teaching because of their experiences, their education that they received, and their experiences. And, and so I, I, I have a hard time, like, when I see data, or I see, you know, numbers or whatever, then I think about all the people that maybe possibly opt out of any type of a standardized test. They opt out of assessments. They, they want, they want things done in, like, real-time by quizzes, tests, homework. Their, their parents want to see that, so that stuff comes home. More and more, things are done on here, and they're done at school, and, and then we're not really seeing the, we, we might see results, we might see some scores, but I don't, we're not seeing like, what's being asked, what, how they're answering those questions, where before, you could see everything. You could see, and you could say the parents should request that, but if it's done in paper, if it's done in real-time that week, you, grades, or you can see zero, I didn't, they didn't even put their name on it, you know? Things like that.
Can I?
Holding people accountable. So what I'm trying to say is that it, it seems like we're coming down more, with more data, and, and we're narrowly focusing education based off of a standard, like a standardized or an assessment, or constant assessment. You could say, well, we're, no, we're not doing that, they're picking their own curriculum, but it has to be towards our standards. I just feel like it's, it's, it's getting more and more narrow, and it's coming down and more pressure from the state, with this 2.0.
I want to ask a clarifying question here. Michelle, are you referencing the, the previous comment right before the break about assessing the formative assessments and collecting data that way? Can, so can you speak to that specifically? What is a formative assessment? How is that data, whatever that data is? How is it collected? How is it used?
So the, the nature of the formative assessment, we, formative assessment is anything that is, I, I would call everything formative assessment, but it, it's really anything that's gonna inform instruction, or inform teachers along the way. We, we often refer to the summative in a way that, that's kind of the end of something. So we give that towards the end of the school year, but along the way, we want to know how our students are doing. I, I, I think the, the data piece, it, the question, I think that, that I'm hearing is, are we narrowing the focus? I, I would say that we are, as, as a fundamental element, elevating our standards. So we are determining, based on what the state board has approved, as our, our different types of standards, you approve lots of different standards, we are saying those matter. Those are the, the ways we can measure whether or not our students know and can do the things that we feel like will prepare them to be successful every day and beyond. So that formative assessment, I, I feel like the, the gap that we're trying to fill is, do our teachers know how students are performing against standards throughout a school year? Many of our people would say we don't have good data on that. We have a tool that's been developed and, and around for a long time to be able to provide that type of data directly to the teacher to inform how they instruct, to ensure that they're teaching the standards and that students are learning the standards. So that's an example of what we're saying we believe helps to address that lack of standards alignment that has created stagnating assessment results that are, again, testing whether our students know our standards and can utilize those standards in an effective way.
So, so if, again, it's being done at the school, and it's being done probably an adaptive or a computer, is that, is it being done with pen and pencil?
Most things would be electronic.
Okay.
Yes.
So again, we're, we're not seeing that as a parent.
You certainly can. I mean, I think that's the, that's the, we're not seeing it because we're not utilizing it.
The questions, I mean, the questions and how that, how that child's answering.
I think that's a, a really important part of what we're trying to build, is that we want our parents to know standards. And I think that, you know, when I sit down with a, a teacher at a parent-teacher conference, great teachers, they're, they're telling me how my child is doing based on the, the risk or the, the skill deficits they may have for that particular grade level. They need to have these skills. But those are just telling us, are they at risk to not have success within that grade level? What that standards reference data is telling you is, do, do my children actually, are they learning the things that the state of Kansas has said they need to learn in order to be prepared and be successful as they move through school and beyond? So that's something that, that I, I believe needs to be a part of that parent conversation directly. I think our parents need to have a better understanding of our standards. This is a tool to be able to provide that very thing. But I, I think if there's, if there's any degree from the board that we should not be elevating the standards that you approve, that, this model is, is doing that. I mean, we feel like that's a critical piece. We've been talking about the fundamental element of standards alignment for well over a year. And so this is, as an example of what a system can do, a way to do that very thing that we believe is fundamental, based on what you approve and what we've decided kids need to know and be able to do. So that's where that data point that we believe is, is directly related to our objective, that's where it comes into play in this particular example.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask a follow-up, because I feel like Michelle and I are on very different pages, and I need you to help us get to the same place. So I think I heard you say that a formative assessment is generally done with pencil and paper?
No, it, it can be. That, that often would be the case, like in a regular classroom setting, where a teacher maybe is ju, just doing a quick check, or maybe doing a, a pop quiz, those types of things. It can be either way. For our, our, our assess, our balance assessment system that we utilize as a state, we, we, we utilize electronic means to be able to do that.
Right. I feel like there's a disconnect between the electronic assessment and formative assessments, which happen all the time in a classroom, correct?
They do, yes.
I mean, any individual student may be given formative assessments throughout the day.
Correct.
It's just a teacher asking a question, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so when we talk, when you talk about the data that the teacher is getting back, when you say data, you're talking about those students are responding to the question, and the teacher is processing that and saying, okay, I did my job, they understand.
Correct.
Or, they don't understand, I need to change the way that I'm teaching this until they understand. Am I on the right page?
You're on the right page.
Does that help?
It does, but some kids take a, they, sometimes kids take the whole semester, and then everything clicks together at the, you know, it takes, so if you're just saying one snapshot that day, and then you're, I'm getting 26 data points on that kid, it's, 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 it's like a constant, like, it just, some kids, it just takes a little longer. And before, years ago, we just would have homework come home at the end, I mean, I might have stacks of paper, I took notes on, or whatever, I've taken notes on, and, and it's like, it's up here, it's what I've taken from that, and every individual's gonna be different. We're not gonna get all the same outcomes of every kid we put into a system. That's not how that's gonna work. It shouldn't work in America like that. It needs to be driven individually, and everybody's gonna come out differently, coming out of high school with, they might all get the same information, but they're all gonna come out differently on, on their own personal experiences, how their family values are, how their morals are, everything is gonna come out a little bit differently. Now, if we're going back to the basics, if I can, you know, I can write a sentence correctly, and I know where my punctuation, those are all things that are not subjective. Things that I'm, I'm more concerned about, and what I've seen over time is more subjective things being assessed of the kids, not necessarily black and white, where you see, okay, that, yeah, that makes sense, it applies to everybody. But then the educational part comes out, is the things I learned about the Civil War, different things are gonna be different based off of the teacher, their experiences, my experiences, my grandfather served in this, or whatever. That, that's the kind of stuff I'm feeling like, I'm just concerned about tracking and data, and, and it may not be a true, a true assessment at all, or a, a true data point at all. It's based off of what she's thinking, or what she's writing down, and, and it's like, ah, I gotta, I gotta do all these data points, and we're getting away from just teaching and... getting away from just teaching and, and teaching and, and true education, in my opinion. It's just narrowly focused on data that's probably incomplete, especially if the parent opts out of technology and assessments.
Deana.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I asked you the question about if we added FAFSA and structured literacy, how, where that would fit in? And you sort of all alluded to the fact that it'd be more in the school improvement arena. But I'm wondering, do we need to add that now so districts know that that's also a component that we're looking at or that we want to be addressed through KISA? Or is, I guess, I'm somewhat like Betty, I'm a little confused about where that fits in or how we need to fit it in because I think both are very important. And that's, that's one question. Then I have another one if the Chair will allow.
So I would say for FAFSA and structured literacy, that, I, we would approach those very differently. For the FAFSA requirement, if the board were to do something with accreditation, we would see that as a compliance area and an assurance. And it would be about how the system is informing families and students about the benefits of that application process. And they would need to tell us that we've gone through that process. And so that would fall under the compliance area of
Okay.
KISA. For structured literacy, the board could consider something related to compliance. I would argue that the effective part of implementation is really through school improvement. And so that, through that school improvement model, you're identifying the action that, at the system level, that you would need to take to start implementation or continue implementation of structured literacy. So we know that often starts with training, but it also includes, are your materials aligned? Do you have access to, to the, to the data that's telling you whether or not your students are having success? That goes back to that more coherent school improvement model that, that we've been talking about for quite some time. So FAFSA would fall under the compliance area. Structured literacy, we would really ask systems to identify, how are they implementing that within that school improvement model?
Thanks for clarifying that. My other question has to do with site councils and the school board itself. I guess I'm not seeing as much involvement, having been on a site council and, uh, school improvement throughout the time, well, not after it began. From QPA on, I was pretty deeply involved at my school itself. So to me, that site council and the board members of, of the board were key in making certain that it worked. I know there were lots of things with the site council that, um, through the site council that we addressed with community members. That was just incredible, the change in attitude for those folks who lived around a middle school and the way middle school kids just sort of ran across their lawns and so on. There became a more of a relationship. So it just seems to me that there's some key components there that I'm hoping we're not, um, not missing because, um, your, your community should be driving a lot of the things that goes on, go on in your buildings anyway and a lot of the focus of education. And it's, seems to me they're sort of a, on the side, looking in instead of being a, a component. So maybe I'm seeing a, a different view than intended, but that is a concern and hopefully I'm reading it wrong.
I could reiterate if it's okay, Madam Chair, just where we see that component applying here. You know, at one time, our, our team was thinking that, that, that collaborative school improvement day is a time where the system can really develop that action plan. And we quickly started to talk about how that's, that's negating this idea of collaborating with your, your overall community. And so we, we determined that that period of time is critical. So the school improvement day, there's a, there's an intent to that. There are objectives set so that, uh, that, that leadership team can take responsibility for the type of action that addresses whatever deficits they have within that system. And then they will, they will plan on that day. So a big part of our afternoon is planning for how you go back and engage these different entities. For some, the reality is, they don't have an active site council. That might be step number one for them is to make sure that they're bringing people in to be able to talk about these types of things and they've got a, an active site council. We know for some, they don't have a, an existing district leadership team. So there's different starting points, but that, that annual, ongoing school community collaboration, we believe, is, is extremely critical. I think we're, as we go through this process, and it's all new, so I understand and I, I apologize for, for any confusion. It's so much. There's, and there's a lot of detail here. But there are certain things that we feel like have to occur. And this is one of those elements that we believe is critical. We believe that, that not just teachers, it's not just the teachers that need to understand what it is we want them to teach. And, and it's not just having data so that the teacher knows that. It's so that everybody understands what our standards are, so that parents understand, what are those grade level expectations for a student and are they meeting those? And if we don't know that, or if our, our systems are saying, we don't, we don't, you know, we often hear, we want to be evaluated on our FastBridge data. That's, that's something that we've heard often. Well, that's not telling us anything about whether or not a student is achieving the standards that, that we've established. And so if we don't have that data point, we think that we need to, we need to understand and onboard that data point and then talk about, you know, that particular piece because that's, all that's doing is assessing whether the student knows the standard that, that the state of Kansas has said we need to establish. So, and we believe the community needs to understand that as well. So.
Well, and maybe I should clarify a little bit because I did serve on a, on a, not only the building leadership team, but also as, from a teacher point of view, but also the district leadership team. And neither, neither of those actually involved a site council. But I was just concerned that we kind of didn't talk about how we, the site council would be involved. And I understand that that may come later or hopefully will.
It's, it's a part of the, the school improvement day. So they're walking away with their plan to engage those, those entities. And we would include site council on that. And again, for some, they're going to hear us say, as we go out to these informational sessions, as we do weekly Zooms, if you don't have a site council or you don't have a district leadership team, you need to establish those. And here's some guidelines to be able to do that. Here's some models to be able to look at to do that because those don't exist in every community. Through this process, they will need to. We need that colla, it's all built on collaboration. It's all built on, you know, the systems collaborating together, the, the district leadership team, KSD collaborating with the systems. That's, that's what the process is all about. So these structures have to be in place.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anne. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think might still be a little confusion on the testing thing because I think the only reason you guys brought up formative tests is as an example of what a district might do to assess where students are. Those formative tests are just like, you know, checkpoints along the way throughout the year to make sure that the kids are on track to understand the standards. And we all know, they all go at different rates. Some will be there by the end of the year and some won't. But it gives the teacher a chance to build a little test to see if we're on track to know the standards before we have to take the big test, right? And they're only available right now, I think, in math and ELA. And we're working on science. Would I be right? So there's no formative tests out there to test anything but academics. So, but the other data we're talking about that they bring in for their school improvement day is the data that's, that's, that they have worked to collect about how well we're doing, you know? And so, to help them build an action plan. Totally different than formative assessment. That's a classroom tool. This is a, what we're talking about here is a school improvement tool. Would I be pretty close on that? Well, I, I think, you know, we had like four goals in mind when we set out to do this. One was that 2.0 would be more simple. I'm not sure we hit that, but it would be more objective in the measures rather than, I'll know it when I see it. The plane would be built before we took off and we would be kind of helping schools along the way and not waiting for a five-year, you know, surprise. Hopefully not a surprise. And I think we got some of that and we didn't get some of that. But so here are the, the things I've seen in the model that I have some concerns about. I think on the student outcome part, there's no reason to wait till '26, '27, or even after we get the new assessments in math and English and sciences this year, to say what X is. Because X is a goal of moving kids from level one up, right, and more into three and four. And that, I don't think that should be determined by the assessment. That's, how many kids do we want and, you know what I mean? And it might vary by school, what good is. But that, again, is kind of the, I hate this because I'll know it when I see it, but I think we kind of need a rubric for some schools. But I, I think we can figure out what X is without waiting for the new assessments to be in place. And I think if we don't have, do we have rubrics on each of the three areas that are going to be on the score, the scoreboard? I mean, the three areas of, you know, outcomes, school improvement and compliance, rubrics for the school improvement work group to look at?
I would say yes, because we have rubrics for each compliance area.
We do?
Mm-hmm.
Is that built already?
We had that for this year.
Okay.
And then we have a rubric we're using to evaluate or review systems' action plan, right? So that's, that's to make sure it's complete, it's clear, it's there on the right track.
And that rubric's there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, it's, it's under development.
Okay.
And then I, I guess with the outcomes, I would consider what we've shared with the board, you know, in terms of those three performance categories
Right.
And each of those, a rubric.
But it has X's in it, like?
Yes.
How much, yet to be determined.
Yeah. Upon approval of the model, we can go and build that out. And we feel like having, that we can have that by this fall. We can have what those thresholds are, what it means to be increasing or decreasing, the timeframes that we're looking at.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we don't want to just make a, a snap judgment on one year's worth of data for a system. We want to look at over trend data, right, over time.
On student outcomes?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So how much, besides this, how much is left to be developed? Could we expect, if we approved this today, I mean, we're still, and I got a question about the motion too, but we're still really building the plane, truth be known. I mean, when will all the forms and the scoreboard and everything be ready to go?
Well, I, can I just be honest
Sure.
With the board? Back in December, when the board approved accreditation model, we were under the impression that that would be what the board approves. And then we had the charge from the board to go build that out. That's not what the motion was. The motion was to bring back an actionable model. We have brought back an actionable model. And the reason that we're going into this detail is because we've been asked for that. So we have built, we have responded to everything that the board has asked of us. We've determined the areas. You've approved that. We have developed an actionable model and know we don't have it to the nth degree, but I don't know where you stop before we can actually do the work of school improvement. So if you want that authority to approve everything that we do as we go forward, I think we can continue with this, this pace.
No, that's not what I'm saying, Jay. I'm not saying we need to approve the form. We just want to make sure the plane is built and ready to go. Whatever it looks like, that's your job to put
Yep.
The form together, but every month we come back and there's, and it's, it's not finished.
It's because we've been asked for those things.
Yeah.
And a lot of the things that we've been asked for are currently under development. I don't think we're going to be at, at a space where we have everything developed for the next three years and we don't, that, we wouldn't expect that from anybody
No, but that's not what I'm
That's working towards improvement.
That's not what I'm saying, Jay. School starts in about two weeks.
Yes.
Okay? And our first, um, school improvement days are, what, late September? And between now and then, they are supposed to use these things we're talking about to get ready for school improvement day, but they're not developed yet. That's what I'm saying. I'm not talking about the next three years. I'm talking about next month. They're supposed to start using these tools.
So upon the action by the board, we are, we are scheduled to send out those guided reflection, reflection questions, right, that every system would go through.
Which didn't exist last month, but let's let you do it.
Jay, finish.
So they are, that is going to be released next week.
Okay.
We have the data tools ready for, for that. The systems, we are set to begin this year. We have all of our check-ins scheduled. We have all the school improvement days scheduled. I mean, we have, the logistics are all worked out. We have the tools that we're going to use at the check-ins and the school improvement days. So I, I feel like we are ready to go. And we have things, now, does that mean we're not going to adjust things as we go along? We absolutely have to do that, right? If, if the data is showing that we need to make adjustments, then we need to make adjustments. But I feel we are ready. Once the board says, this is the direction we want to go, we're ready to go out and do that work.
Well, I, I mean, we're, we've been fine with the direction, but you know, superintendents are writing to me going, I'm not sure I have the tools to know what I'm supposed to collect to bring to the school improvement day.
Randy.
Anne, look at the survey. Look at the survey.
Yeah.
Ninety-five percent plus said they're ready to go into the year. I, I hear from people that complain about things every day, too.
Yeah.
All right? But I look at the data and it's overwhelming that they say they're ready to go.
Somewhat. A lot, but I'm not, I'm, okay, don't get me wrong. I'm going to vote to move ahead. I'm ready to move ahead. I just want you to know that I'm still hearing that people are concerned that we don't have, they're still not quite sure what's expected. And the only other thing would be that we do have rubrics for the school improvement work group to use because Jim's question was good, who's going to determine it? The other question is, how do you get to the arc and who sends you? So that, we want to make sure that how that decision is made is consistent because that's one of the complaints we got before, that I didn't feel like everything was consistent in how, in terms of how we got to conditionally accredited. So when we say we're going to vote to approve the model as presented, I'm okay with that, I think. I just want to make sure everything's ready this, early this year, that anybody's going to need. And I don't get the call to say, dang, they changed it again. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I want to point out something that maybe helps resonate with all of you. Site councils. Danny, I think you started, where are the parents? Dean had followed it up. Site councils have been required in law for 30 years. 1992. And Kathy, we have some that aren't doing it. I'm just saying, that's reality. So as we put this together, it doesn't matter how much we layer on, what we have to have is a model that allows local control to do a better job effectively at all these areas. That's, and that is really hard to do from here. It's really hard to do from here. You can, we can pass laws, we can pass regulations, and if no one does them, then 30 years from now, well, that site council was a great idea, but you know, I've got six districts that said, I've never heard of a site council, because someone changed over. I think they're presenting to you a model that, as I mentioned yesterday, is a district model. It's cut down on the amount of paperwork, which was the major complaint of the process. It clearly establishes the outcomes that the state board has said, and it forces them to have conversations locally with their community about what is it that we want to improve upon. It's not perfect. It's not perfect. And it never will be, because we're all going to see it a little bit different, and it has to be played out locally.
Okay. Moving along, Kathy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the things Dr. Watson said yesterday in his report was partnerships with local boards, which is a huge piece and which you have worked to implement in this. So, I mean, I sat through five out of six of the things that I could get to, and I felt like in the midst of that, I could see your bigger picture. And where, I mean, it took, like light bulbs would finally start coming on, but it took that much for me to grasp the reality of the, and listening to the other districts as they talked to you. It's a huge shift. And I think it was really a hard shift for many to go from what was to what you're trying to create. I personally like what I have heard from both of you. I've watched you in the meetings. I like that you're working hard to bring in the local, you know, it isn't just about leadership. It is about communities. It's what we scream for, parent involvement, local boards being involved, because they're not. It's not been happening on many levels. I'm sure there's some that it is. But it is my hope that through this, that there's going to be more conversation, less paperwork, more meaningful connection, more support. That's what I see. That's what I think you're trying to put out there. I hope that everybody can grasp. That's what I saw after sitting through five of those sessions, is that you're looking for more ways to support districts. Hopefully, it doesn't come out as control. But we have had standards forever, like that's real, that's reality. So the hope that the districts, and we hear it from our teachers all the time, boy, when they get into other districts, how much they enjoy learning what's going on in their, in other school districts. And this is another way that that can continue to happen. So I'm hoping that the time involved in meeting isn't too much, because I know that's a struggle for our little districts and the few people that they have to cover holes when people leave. But I think it's definitely worth it, so I'm hoping it all comes together. So I definitely support this. I feel like I've seen these guys work very hard. I see the pieces. I think you've got everything in play to start, but like you said, it's going to take walking it out, because it is so new, to keep everything rolling. So I would ask for quarterly updates in this first year, just to kind of continue hearing how it's going and what the districts are saying back to you in the process, especially once they've had those meetings together and the check-ins and like hearing back from how's that going? Is that part truly working? So I feel like if we could get a little bit more, instead of, you know, twice a year, just especially in this beginning part, would be really helpful just to hear what's happening. And I do apologize if I pulled up and weed in the whole data thing, but I was just trying to understand if we were asking, if we were asking for more data, even through the mini tests, like that's a concern that we're, so if that's staying local and benefiting, that's hopefully a good thing as well.
Betty.
Madam Chair, I am prepared to make a motion if it's acceptable.
Absolutely.
A great deal of, and I'd like to make a statement first real quick, a great deal of information was given to us, and I think that's probably where a problem occurred for me. It's digesting all of the information. I have no problem with the model, but I would like to revise the written motion to take into consideration something Kathy just said, that we, I add in update. So if I may, I move that the Kansas State, wait a minute, I have the wrong one. Here we go. I move that the Kansas State Board of Education accept the proposed KISA 2.0 model as presented to go into effect, beginning with the 2024 and 2025 school year, with the caveat being added that we would be provided updates on a quarterly basis.
Sarah Second. Jim Porter. Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Seven to two. Motion passes. Kathy.
I did just want to really speak to the whole private schools and what you guys have done, and I know you have representation here, and I just really appreciate it. It sounds like there has been good collaborative hard work to make sure we're working with our private schools. And I just really want to give you my appreciation for that and for your hard work with KSD. So thank you.
Board members, do we need a break, or do we want to go into consent? Okay, consent is. We have, we had a few adjustments to the consent agenda yesterday. B, C, and L had all been polled for further discussion. Is Dean here?
No.
Because two of those are his. Okay. And did you get the answers to the questions you had?
I did. I just really have a comment to make before voting.
Okay. Do you want to make your comment now?
I do want to say for the CAC members, I feel like this is no different than the PSB and the PPC and the different councils and boards we have, that these should be brought forward on a full agenda item. I'm not going to vote against this. I'm just truly asking for this in the future to be added to the agenda so that they're truly brought forward. I did have to ask for more information about the new members, and I did get some of that, but these are important things that we're responsible for, and I feel like they need to be brought forward.
Okay. Question. Doesn't CAC pick their own new members? They pick their own. We don't pick them.
But we're asked to approve them.
Right.
So.
Just saying you want to know more about their, the people they pick?
Right, just given some information.
Gotcha.
Because if that's our oversight, then I just feel like that's important to truly have oversight, have some information given and know what's happening.
There's nothing wrong with putting your name in there.
Thank you. When it comes to, I'm sorry.
Just thank you. That helps us clarify your needs.
On, I think it's C and L, if I have my numbers right, with the networks and the contracts. And I did get more information. From the information given, what I saw was increasing capacity, changing contracts to new agreements. I don't see this as consent. I see this as changing things, some things happening differently that should be brought before the board fully. So those are just my comments before we vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And then we had also polled at Michelle's request, items I and J, and those are just to vote separately, correct? Okay. Kathy, do you want to vote separately on B, C, and L?
I like C separate, and you can put C and L together.
C and L together. We'll vote separately on B.
That's CAC, right?
B is CAC. And then we'll do a separate vote on I and C together. So that's four votes. One for everything else on the consent agenda, one for items C and L only, one for B, and one for I and C. Anybody want to make those motions?
I move that we approve everything that wasn't pulled.
Is there a second? Betty. Any further discussion on consent? All in favor, raise your hand. That is a nine-zero vote. Motion passes for the general consent agenda. And then items C and L only, we have a motion to approve those. Betty. Jim. Discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Abstained. Okay, so that's six, two, one. Motion passes for C and L. Sorry, I got to write all this down. Item B, motion to approve B. Kathy? And a second? Betty?
B.
B, just B. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. That's nine-zero. Motion passes. And items I and C, can I have a motion to approve those? I wrote down C and said C. Is that incorrect?
I and J.
Oh, we just did C. It would be I and J. All right, motion for I and J. Jim? And a second? Betty? All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed. Seven-two. Motion passes. Thank you. Chair report. I'll go straight to Mark. Remarks from the board attorney? Hope we didn't go too fast for you there.
Good afternoon. My monthly report, you obviously see from the time spent in the monthly summary, the significant amount of time took up with the land transfer work. There's no update on that, other than just to comment on that that was obviously something that kept a number of people busy, including myself. I did want to just pose a question as a follow-up, that maybe it falls under the item of a future agenda or perhaps a policy committee, but before it gets, that whole topic gets cold, I guess the question is, if any board members felt that the revisions need to be suggested to the guidelines that were presented, because that was part of what you went through. So we didn't really, it wasn't really appropriate to bring up that you wanted changes to the board guidelines as it related to policy transfer, but since it's fresh in your mind, it had been 20-plus years since, you know, the board had really looked at those policy guidelines. Just throw that out, that's, you know, if that's, if, as a follow-up to that, that any of those guidelines needed to be changed, somebody should probably bring that up and we should address that while it's fresh in your mind. The second item for reporting is just a Kansas case on the Open Meetings Act. It involved Shawnee Mission School District and a case involving whether or not, excuse me, yeah, which is, it sets out the fundamental policy for open meetings, and I'll circulate that. It's always, it's not always fun to read cases, but of course, this one had an intro that's worthy of reading because it's for the entertainment value. But this whole case had to do with whether or not a policy, excuse me, whether or not basically a subcommittee should be open to the public or behind, what was described as behind closed doors. And the court, the three judges from the Court of Appeals wrote, "The Wizard of Oz may have been hidden behind a curtain while controlling things in Oz, but then he was not in Kansas. In Kansas, the public policy is that public business must be done in public, not behind a curtain or a closed door. That policy was enshrined into law by the legislature's enactment of the Kansas Open Meetings Act." And it cites the statute. So it was, I'm sure it was fun to write that as a judge, and that would, that would be a fun way to introduce a fairly dry subject like Open Meetings Act. But the case does cite to some general policy language. It gets lost in the end because they have to drill down to whether or not the parent had standing to bring this specific lawsuit, and so it's less important in that case, because mostly when Open Meetings Act cases are initiated, they're by the district attorney or the attorney general, and the private right of action of a parent or a citizen is much more limited. So it, but I had to share that because it just came out in June, June 28th, and I watched the reports from the Court of Appeals and Supreme Court. So it is a topic that comes up and gets litigated from time to time. The remainder of my comments will be more of an aspirational nature or questions or comments rather than reporting, but I guess when I say aspirational, it would be my hope that the board would properly use the abstention vote. And I plan to recirculate the memo that I provided last year because it continues to come up. I think it's, I think it's inappropriate, not inappropriate, it's an improper vote on an abstention many times, it's not always, but certainly when board members are not in attendance at meetings. And so, for example, there have been times when an abstention vote is because it's basically, I wasn't there, so I'm either, you know, not positive or negative on a vote, or there's a conflict of interest. But in those, those are really the only two situations where an abstention is the appropriate vote. It should be really in favor of or against. I'll be happy to circulate that memo around again. And then, you know, I guess the last topic is really a big one, but it's something that I've been thinking about and brainstorming about and comes up. And so maybe it's just to address the elephant in the room, and that is the minimum six-person vote that, you know, becomes, becomes an issue. I would, you know, in reflecting on the agenda and the action of the items that the board took today, you know, that first section, just my observation, from the topic of FAFSA, you know, from my vantage point, that was a very healthy, robust, and vigorous debate and conversation about both the positives and negatives. And so anybody who's observing or, you know, wanting to, you know, catch up on the underlying rationale of any board member to vote for or against something is present in the public record. And it's, and I think that, you know, kind of ties back into that, you know, the business of a public board is to be, is to be conducted in open session, and that was a perfect example. It doesn't, you know, I don't, I don't have a, I mean, I have, I might have a personal opinion, but as a lawyer sitting here, all that really matters is that there's a good vigorous debate on those issues and that the public can make decisions, you know, based on what's, what's in the record, if you will. When it comes to things like not, things that are a change in direction of the board, and maybe the vote comes up that might get close, not picking on one, but just thinking, you know, like for example, one that would have a monumental change or momentous change in the direct, in the public policy of the agency, of the board, of the state of Kansas, like not approving federal funds for a school lunch program. I, I don't know how to implement or suggest the more vigorous debate or robust discussion on that, but if it gets to a point where something like that, which is so momentous, is, is just fails for lack of six votes, then, you know, to me, there's two things. One is, there should be more discussion as to why members vote against something. And I think there needs to be policies that are built into your calendar to develop Plan B. So, for example-- to develop Plan B. So, for example, we're talking about legislative priorities coming up and to, to November. If that's truly a decision that the board is going to make, then I think probably they need to build in some contingency plans for discussion on, okay, how are you going to replace that funding? Or are you going to make a request to the legislature that says, "We need to fund school lunches" or come up, you know, replace, replace that money. So when I say this is an aspirational discussion, it's, I, there's no way to, I mean, there's nothing in the policy. I can't say that that's an improper, but I'm saying from a public policy and governance standpoint, you know, I do have a concern about what happens in the, in the months to come, if there's turnover or if things that are normally, and, and I don't mean routine in the sense that, that they're, you know, not controversial, but if you make a major policy shift like that, then I would, I think that some discussion needs to occur about, you know, alternative funding, for example, for something like that. Because that's not just, you know, that's not going to be a, a slight, you know, decision or vote. And I think that if, if those are also the kinds of policy shifts that the board plans to make, I think you should include additional requests for funding of the legislature for, you know, legal budgets, legal fights that the board might have for those kinds of things because the board doesn't necessarily, you know, get that, a separate litigation fund for those kinds of things. And then as a, when we're thinking about the, just, I realize it's a little bit rambling, but, you know, we think about the, the options for, you know, social media and policy development. I did want to add that, you know, the state of Kansas has joined in legal claims against social media companies like Meta to, on the same theory that, you know, tobacco and other, other societal giants have, you know, have been forced to contribute to the causes of depression and things like that. So while the conversation was certainly good about what, what you might do at a board level, or you might ask a local, local school board to do, there are some very global, you know, litigation out there against the companies that, so the state of Kansas is participating in. And if the state of Kansas were to receive money, you know, like it has from the fentanyl or the opioids or, you know, smoking or the, you know, millions and millions of dollars have come in there. Those are the kind of things you might want to include in your policy or your legislative initiatives with the legislature that, that you, you hope to, you know, you can't bank on that, but if in the, in the event it does come up, that either you work with the Kansas Attorney General so that you're working towards having the, the true victims benefit from any recovery, or asking the legislature, you know, recognize that, that those, the causes of depression and the things that are, you know, that are the societal ills or the outcome of the social media or the claims against Meta go to backfill, if you will, the, you know, the costs that are, that are affecting school districts and, and education. So. So I guess if I were to just boil down the, the aspirational policy governance conversation, I would say that either a, add to the agenda in the future in the open session, a policy discussion and debate on what, what things the board might do as an alternative in the event that certain funding mechanisms or, or we change the status quo on things or that you have a very lengthy executive session to discuss with your legal counsel, the potential legal liability for board action or inaction as it relates to, to items like dramatic shift in, in federal funding that might, might trigger litigation. So thank you for allowing me to provide some more philosophical or more questions, just kind of some dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you for trying to keep us out of court. Appreciate it, Mark. Real quick on remarks from the chair. I did want to ask Commissioner Watson, do you have a recommendation on the screen time discussion that we had late yesterday and how we go forward from there? I mentioned it as a future agenda item, but what do our options look like in that?
First, does anyone use Webster's anymore? Is that, is that still a viable? I don't know. I, I just thought, the word cellphone, I just need to change. I, I want to write my own, Wikipedia, I guess, is where you write your own definition. Because it's really not, right? We, anyway. I, I would, I think that this board wants to do something. I think the question is, how far do you want to go? And to what depth you want to go? I think Mark said, you know, there's litigation. What I'd like to suggest to you, let me lay it out, but a true blue ribbon task force co-chaired by a Kansas student and a Kansas principal and have student voice to developing recommendations to you that would come to this board before this board is not this board. Because, because as you know, all of you know this, is when you come on, which we'll have at least three new members come on in January, they're going to look and go, what did, what'd you guys do in the past? And, because they're not going to know. And this would give this board the opportunity to say, yes, no, tweak, whatever. But it would give this board, and you're not starting over by doing that. I could get that up and going for you by August and report to you no later than December, hopefully by November. So really intense work, but then done. Jim, remember, you know, we were going to go too long with the graduation task and where we were losing people. They'll do intense work. And I would ask that you consider having two board members on that. So anyway, Madam Chair, I know that this has been something really important to you and that would be my offer.
You're sure you can do that by August?
Yes, I'm positive I can do that by August. Or have it set up and ready to go. Yeah.
Okay. Head nods. Any, any objections there? I think that sounds like a good path forward. Briefly, Michelle?
Yes. So is that, Randy, is that just going to be about the cell phones or is that going to be about technology and the, all technology in the classroom?
Yeah, I think I'm gonna, we'll start probably with how broad do they want it and then what do they want to narrow? So you saw what they talked about was screen time, not educational, cellphone use. And I'm missing something in there. Social media, thank you. I think what we lay out for the task force is what are the parameters? What, what are the charges that you want them to deliver? Because I think if it's too broad, they can't do their work. And so I would come back to you in August, Michelle, and say, we, here's the task force, right? Here's the people. They're ready to go. What is the charge that you want to give them? Does that make sense? And then you can give that. You can help formulate that.
Kathy?
I just wanted to say, before we get too far from Mark's report, I don't know if you guys looked over his bill. I did. And I don't know if you saw him. I just kind of wanted to openly say, really appreciate the 7.9 unbillable hours of work that he did put into the order with the, everything with the land transfer. I just really appreciate it. I mean, it was a big bill and I'm like, holy cow, you know? But as I looked, I saw, I mean, obviously a very fair representation of the hard work he did. So I did appreciate that and wanted to just say that publicly. So thank you.
Okay. Moving right along. Action on board travel requests. You have it in your packet, I believe. Any additions to board travel can be emailed to Deborah. Is there anything specific that you desperately need to say aloud? If, if you need to add, you can just send an email unless it's something, international travel, something major the board needs to know about. Otherwise, if it's just routine travel.
I'd love to say it was international, but.
Okay, an email is fine then.
Actually, it's just Zoom meetings on the 16th of this month. And one of them is Teacher of the Year selection. And the other one is a pep committee. The.
And the reason I asked for email is just to make it easier for Deborah. That way she's got it written and knows exactly what it's for. So may I have a motion to approve board travel as presented in your packet? Betty? And a second from Kathy. All in favor, raise your hand. That's nine zero, motion passes. Thank you. And committee reports. I went back to my good old list because I hadn't looked at it in a while and there have been a few tweaks, but I just wanted to call out the committees that we have, standing committees that the board has. And if I leave one out, please correct me. We've got a policy committee, which met yesterday. There's a communications committee, which is comprised of Michelle and Jim. Is it just the two of you? Okay. And then there's a student voice committee, which is Michelle and Betty. Just the two of you, right? Okay. And policy is Betty, Kathy, Dina. All right. Am I missing any standing committees? That's, that's just you have, that's okay. Yep. And yeah, then board members have many other committees and groups that they serve on. Okay. So are there any committee reports? Betty?
First, I'd like to start off with the policy committee. There will be no more Tuesday lunch meetings. The policy committee will, will convene via Zoom. And if you want the rationale, I can provide you in, in a couple of sentences. The policy committee, we are in the meeting. We continue business over lunch and then we come back with, and we don't have that mental break. My committee is outstanding. They do a great job, but we need to go to lunch too. So our future meetings, there'll be no more announcement, policy committee meeting at noon. We will, the policy committee will work that out with the board secretary. If we need our attorney present, then he will be advised. There are some things that we hash out where we don't need his, don't need him there. So again, that's something that we will work out on as needed basis. First thing, first thing. Second thing, and I don't think, I was told by our attorney that I could do that without a vote. So. The, this, the second thing, the policy committee has really been working hard on updating, which we will have a present item of review. Receive item, thank you. These long meetings, receive item in August. This will deal specifically with evaluations of the commissioner, board attorney and the board secretary. And of course, we'll be working through to see, because there are some technological things that we're trying to incorporate, if we can get Wendy in on, on that so she can share in the receive items, what, what we're looking at and what we'll be doing. That's it for the policy committee. I do want to comment because I represented the board in a meeting in DC. If I can make just a couple of comments about that. Transformation of school districts, which really was an invigorating meeting. We talked about things of where we are envisioning where school districts should be going, state legislators should be looking into. And it made, it gave me an opportunity to reflect on how we don't, as a board, have much of an opportunity to look at the panoramic view of where we're trying to go, how we are implementing our vision. And I'm probably going to incorporate that as an agenda. Well, it's a request because I am hoping that before the end of the year, we, we have an opportunity to go on a retreat, board retreat, where we discuss some of those things that perhaps would be good to look at. One of the things that was brought up in the meeting was if we look at the history of the origin of the education system, it was meeting needs set many, many years ago. And those needs are so different today. So the question was, how are we as boards preparing ourselves to, to recreate or not recreate, create more adaptable visions and goals for today's needs? I had the chance to talk about some of the things that we as a state were doing, looking at. Graduation requirement was certainly something that I took a delight in talking about. Looking at mental health, which again, was something that was very appreciated because of the significant number of increase of students that are facing mental health issues. But to hear from other states in terms of what they were doing that would contribute to the success of all students. I felt really proud because there were a couple of states we were just way ahead of. And I sat back and listened because there were some states that I felt we kind of lagged behind a little bit. And since we have proclaimed that we're going to be the leader, then we need to overtake those states that, that were blossoming. So I'm hoping that we have an opportunity to revisit what it is that we can do to make sure all of our students are successful. One of the things that was developed was a toolkit for the whole child toolkit, which I thought was an interesting concept because if we are directed by the whole child, which means looking at those things internal and external that lend themselves to the success of students, we couldn't go wrong. So this was a great opportunity. I would encourage any board member, old or new, if you have an opportunity to participate in the thought-provoking visions of these meetings, do so. Because sometimes I think we get so much in the weeds that it's hard to take that panoramic view, which is where we are supposed to be as a, as a board, looking at a vision and a direction and guiding the state in things that might be beneficial. So that's something that I would encourage. It was a great meeting and I do have some information I'd love to share and I can do that via email if anybody is interested in that. So.
Friday note. If you can send it to the commissioner, he can share it in the Friday note.
Then I will certainly be happy to do that. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Betty. Any other committee reports? Michelle?
So I think everyone received their email about our, the timeline and the conclusion of the Kansas School for the Deaf and the KNEA negotiation meetings that we had. We had two very robust, three-hour, two, three-hour sessions. They were, they were very, I felt like they were very successful and will, will be have, as far as the parties will get the above-accomplished things in the next couple of weeks. Because you received the memorandum of understanding and you're working on that. So the parties haven't, have tentatively agreed to a one-year negotiated agreement from seven, one, two, four to six, three, 25. And one of the reasons we, we reduced that down to one year is legislatively, they get all their money, most of their money directly from the legislation. They have to go to the legislation and get their money. And things come up with stipends and things throughout the year because that's a residential school. And many are, many are not aware that the, when the schools, the public schools close down due to weather, travel and everything, this is a residential school and it has to stay open. So you're having, you know, you're having your staff from nutrition in the, in the kitchen and your. and your, people are there and then you have, if, if the, if the teachers aren't able to come in that next day because they're home with their kids, because their school shut down and they teach at that school, a lot, I'm just saying, a lot of these things came out of this meeting as far as, then you've got the overnight people, that staff that may have to extend over and they're tired, they're, they're, they're working longer hours, the fatigue sets in. So they were trying to work out how that's, how those people would be compensated or not using their personal days to stay home. So it, it went into a lot of deep discussions as far as, a public school shutting down is not the same as a residential school shutting down. These kids may be driving four or five hours away and they go home on the weekends and then they're, you know, it happens in the middle of the week and it might shut down for two days, so a lot of things. And, and that's where we don't want to wait on, on things with the legislation because that, that takes long, they're only in session for a certain amount of time and these situations come up. So I thought that was a good, I thought that was a good compromise is to reduce that negotiated agreement down to one year. And the one-year agreement will have the memorandum of understanding, which Mark received. And let's see, what else? The KNEA, right, will prepare the draft for the MOU and share that with you for review. I don't know if we're going to, are we going to see that or is that something that will be public?
After it's finalized, we'll circulate it for review and approval by the, by the board ultimately.
So it was, I was very, I thought it was very educational, interesting, and, and I felt like we came to a mutual agreement and with those robust, robust discussions, we also, you know, went off and caucused a little bit and, and went away from the group and they went with their group. And I thought it was very, I thought it was, I thought it was very successful.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, anyone else? How about requests for future agenda items? I did get a couple written down from this meeting. Michelle had asked to revisit high-quality instructional materials. Anything else, Kathy?
I'm wanting to know more on the education funding task force. We've all gotten a couple of emails and I honestly don't understand what's going on with that whole thing. So we'd like to make sure we're aware of whatever's happening there and when it's supposed to happen and whatever, whatever all that is.
Overview and update on the funding task force.
Very appropriate because also you're going to need to name some people to that task force. And we've had some people submit. I'd like to be considered, so that was going to be on there.
Frank's been out there talking and I didn't know what he was talking about.
All right, anyone else for future agenda? Jim?
Future agenda, but yesterday when Rocky Nichols was making his presentation, his, things were scrambled, he has sent us all a copy of the update and I'd ask you to make sure that you look at those.
Danny?
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to have some discussion about the PowerPoints, like today's PowerPoint. I can't make a decision, I voted no, but I can't make a decision because of all the stuff I haven't seen and been able to go through my thick head. So I'd like to get PowerPoints to us a week ahead of time. And for me, I need to look through all those things so I can ask some questions.
Probably something we can discuss, okay? Thank you. Anybody else? All right, well, if that's it, we are adjourned.
Already?
Already.